All right, I'm going to call the meeting of April 20th, 2021 to order.
I'll take the roll. Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Here.
Councilmember Knoblock?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem James?
Here.
And Mayor Ward?
All right, present. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments for closed session?
We do not.
All right. Mr. City Attorney Smith, do we have any disclosures that we need to make before we go into closed session?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor and Council. Good evening. There are occasions where, with regard to anticipated litigation, the potential plaintiff or potential defendant know about facts and circumstances in a theory that could give rise to litigation. When that happens and when we know that, we need to disclose orally before you meet what those cases are and what those circumstances are. And there are two, there are two cases here that fall into that category. The first is initiation of litigation potentially against memorial care in an eminent domain action with regard to the current hospital site. Memorial care knows about that possibility. In fact, it was contemplated in a settlement agreement relating to that site. We're talking about that and we need to disclose that to the public in advance. The second item is also under a initiation of litigation. The SCJPIA, that's the city's risk pool, has apprised the city that it would not accept the tender in defense of a lawsuit brought against Mayor Pro Tem James. It's entitled Bieber v. James. The city, if it chooses to seek redress of that denial, needs to do so through a binding arbitration action. The SCJPIA has apprised us of that possibility, but in order to pursue that, that needs to be discussed in closed session as authorized under the Brown Act. And so that's the second item under initiation of litigation. That requires that disclosure. The rest of the items do not, as we understand, the plaintiffs and their mindset.
All right, thank you. Is there any motion to go into closed session?
Excuse me, Mayor Ward, I have a comment before we do that.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ferguson.
Thank you. I know in the past I've asked for us to have closed session minutes because it seems very often that a lot of us, when we talk about certain things that happen, we can't remember, like we're not on the same page. So I've been thinking more about that and I did find a government code 36814. It's actually a government code that does require a record of proceedings and votes and closed session. And I wanted to make sure that we follow that law tonight, starting tonight. It's again, it's government code section 36814, and this is my formal request that the city clerk keep a record in closed session minutes. And these, of course, will be privileged and won't go to the public and leave our hands, but they will stay with the city clerk's office. So I'd like to demand that we do that. Thank you.
So we have a demand from Councilmember Ferguson, but I do remember just recently we discussed this item under council policy and the council did not elect to take that up. And we spoke at length of why we did not do that.
We did. We didn't have a government code available at the time and it's actually, it's actually in the government code slot. So.
Okay. City Attorney Smith, can you opine on that?
Yeah, I did get a heads up on this, so I'm doing my best here. Government code 36814 says the council shall cause a clerk to keep a correct record of its proceedings. At the request of a member, the clerk shall enter the eyes and nose in a journal. The Brown Act contains more specific directives in that regard. It allows the city council to decide in closed session whether it chooses to apply this section and have minutes. It also gives the court the ability to impose a remedy that the council keep minutes. I don't think, with due respect, Councilmember Ferguson's interpretation of 36814 jives with the provision of the Brown Act that gives court the ability to require minutes because that order would be superfluous if 36814 already required that.
Okay. So any discussion of that will be in closed session if we so choose to do that. Okay, council, we need a motion to go into closed session.
So moves.
A motion by Mayor Pro Tem James and a second by Councilmember Knoblock.
Councilmember Duncan?
I.
Councilmember Ferguson?
I.
Councilmember Knoblock?
I.
Mayor Pro Tem James?
I.
And Mayor Ward?
I.
Carrie Spiveau.
All right, we are back in open session.
Yes, and let the record show all council members are present. First item on the agenda, invocation.
We didn't talk about that. Councilmember Knoblock, would you like to give the invocation? Thank you.
And so, all rise, Susan. Are you ready? Begin.
Please, please bow your hearts and your heads and join with me.
In the name of our Lord Jesus, I want to thank you for this meeting, for those that have volunteered their time to serve this community. Lord, ask your blessings on this community and guide and direct us tonight to do your will, Father, not what we choose to do for our self-benefit, but the will of you. Thank you again and ask your blessings on this meeting in the name of our Lord Jesus.
First item on the agenda is a toll road update.
Madam Clerk, may I?
Madam Clerk, Mayor, I'd like to request that we continue under item nine B under new business. Unfortunately, the consultant that was going to provide that presentation for that agenda report has got traffic or travel delays and I was unable to zoom in. And so I'd like to ask the council if we could continue that to the next council meeting of May 4th.
Okay, is there a motion to continue that item? Yes.
I would like to modify the city manager's recommendation. I think we need to look at all concessionaires. And so I would also include the bicycle shop on North Beach as part of, part of, part of that as well, please.
So that is a motion. Do, we have a second, second by councilmember Noblock.
Councilmember Duncan.
I.
Councilmember Ferguson.
I.
Councilmember Noblock.
I.
Mayor Pro Tim James.
I.
And Mayor Ward.
I.
Carrie Spineup.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mayor. For toll road update, the city just released a press release. There is a special toll road meeting scheduled for this coming Thursday. At that toll road meeting, the toll road board will be considering what is called a project planning policy. This is the toll roads attempt to provide some comfort to the city of San Clemente that a project will not incur unless the document that they're going to be deliberating on goes into effect. And so the city announced in a press release the concerns that they have with that project planning document and are continuing to work with Supervisor Bartlett's office on a potential cooperative agreement with all of the agencies. And so with that, I have nothing to report unless the toll road subcommittee mayor or mayor pro temp.
So I would put a finer point on that it is only the foothill eastern cord that is, that is meeting in, in special session.
Thank you for that correction.
Is that a public meeting?
Um, I'm not sure it's positive. Some of it might be positive, but there's an element in it that where we're agreeing to look at Los Petronas Parkway more than normal in the, as a county arterial, so that we might have an issue.
More than a county arterial?
More than a normal scrutiny that an arterial would receive in the future. So, okay, thank you.
I have a question of Mr. Sund. Mr. Sund, I just wanted to ask you, I know I sent you an email a couple days ago about the toll road page. Can you let me know when staff might be updating that in terms of more current letters and, and articles? Because I did check the other day, I think it was Monday when I wrote you, and still letters from the fall aren't uploaded yet, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Could you upload those?
I will, I will check with staff. I was under the impression they uploaded them, so I'll double check.
And I may have looked in the wrong place, but by the way, the page looks great. It's all reorganized.
Thank you.
But I did go to letters and there's really critical letters that went out last year, so thank you for doing that. All right, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Yes, the next item on the agenda is an update on homeless issue, and we do have a speaker card from Donovan Dream.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, that's right. So I'm just looking at procedure, or we just wait for her to come on?
The public comment box will populate with the commenter as soon as they reach the podium.
Great. Maybe you didn't hear. Laura, we're ready for public comment. Donovan Dream.
She, Donna's coming in now.
Thank you.
Sorry to cause a delay, the volume isn't, we cannot hear what you're saying out in the yard. Okay, so I guess it's my turn to speak on, on topic six A. Okay, so that's the homeless update. And let's see. I brought it, I brought a prop here for solutions to homelessness. And my comments read as, I think we all agree, no one in San Clemente wants to see homeless folks living around town. Homeless people are individuals. Homeless people have names. Homeless people need shelter. Homeless people have issues and feelings. Homeless people needs assessment. Each one deserves a roof over their head and care. We are a loving community. Most of us want a good solution. There are now many successful models for housing to use happening all over the world. We can do this here. We all know it. We can save money in the long run if we do it. We want it. Join us for a creative, long-lasting solution for homelessness. Make San Clemente a showcase city with safe shelter for the homeless. These comments were written by Lisa Spinelli, and I'm presenting them tonight. Solutions for homelessness: provide overnight shelter and shelter options. Safe parking for people living and sleeping in their cars overnight. Meet the toileting needs, the hygiene needs of San Clemente unhoused. A day office for homeless outreach services and case management. Work with the county to access county and state funds and programs for our San Clemente homeless. Thank you for your time and attention, and I will look forward to your update on homelessness in San Clemente. And I will look forward to hearing your strategy, your leadership going forth. Thank you very much.
That's the only comment we have on that item.
Okay, so what is our next item?
I have a quick update, Mayor, if I may, on homelessness.
Yes, thank you.
So pursuant to the last council meeting, I think it was councilmember Duncan who had suggested that we look at the possibility of getting a contractual relationship with Mercy House during the interim period while we're recruiting for our community service outreach worker. I'm proud to say that we'll be doing the interviews for the community service outreach worker next week. We put together a fantastic oral board that will be managing that recruitment process of homeless experts and from other agencies. I did have a great conversation with Mercy House today. Prior to this council meeting, I spoke to the CEO Larry Haynes. They are open to providing an interim service for a period of two to three months, or however long we need. While they won't add a new staffer to their portfolio for us, they will allow the existing outreach workers that are working via this county heat monies that work in South County to expand their hours to provide more services to San Clemente. So I should have an answer by Friday as it relates to those services. But I am confident that we will be able to get into an interim relationship with Mercy House pending our community service outreach worker. At this time, I don't have an intent to exceed $25,000 in terms of service costs, which would be under the city manager's authority to execute. But pursuant to council direction, I wanted to provide that update. And basically let the council know that if they can come back with a reasonable proposal, I will execute that under my city manager authority during the interim until we have our community service outreach worker hired. That's the only update I have at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Mr. City Manager, in regards to the dividers on the benches, can you give us an update on that? Obviously, one divide, one divider doesn't work. They seem to be able to still lie down.
So we, yes, and I've received a couple complaints from the community as to the, the dividers.
I thought it would work.
And so Public Works staff is going to try a solution on one of the benches this week that we're going to look at to see if it works, and it'll be adding another divider to the bench. But I also want to try to be cautious of the aesthetics as well, and so we're going to try one and see if it works, and if it works, then we'll continue with the rest of them as well.
Not, aesthetically speaking, nothing's worse than a pile of junk and someone laying across there all day. So even, even those bars are not pretty. They're, they're a lot prettier than the, the result.
Understood.
And I just want to give Mayor Pro Tim James credit. It was his creative idea to look to other contractors for the interim service, so I thank him for that.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
The next item is a recognition of Tom Bonniget, Public Works Director, City Engineer, and we have one comment, Don Brown, on this item.
Okay, so we'll wait for Mr. Brown. Oh, he's already there.
There he is.
Great.
Here I am. Eleven years ago, as a brand-new planning commissioner, I was detailed or latterly assigned to the coastal advisory committee as the planning commission member. And I, at that time, I met Tom Bonniget, and I'm here on behalf of both Bill Hart, who just got out of the hospital, and Kenny Nealan, in the original coastal advisory committee crew. And we just, I would really wanted to, on their behalf and myself, wish Tom Bonniget fair winds and following seas. What you've got is 16 to 18 years of sand replenishment experience with the Army Corps of Engineer going out the door, along with many other, other issues that I worked with Tom on. I-5 widening, lapada, and a myriad of other traffic issues the planning commission took up with the city engineer, and along with the coastal advisory committee. And so he's been a very capable professional city engineer, and I just wanted to, on behalf of myself and the other two criminals on the coastal, really early coastal advisory committee, wish him fair winds and following seas and good luck in his next endeavor. And so short, dirt, quick and dirty, and I appreciate your time. Thank you. I'll see you all later for item nine C, city council members.
Thank you. Thank you, Don. So I understand, council, that we have a video that has been made for Tom, and we're all looking forward to seeing that.
We're going to take a look-see today and learn a little bit more about where all the water that ends up at Pochee is coming from.
Okay, I really enjoyed that seeing, I think maybe that was one of the first times Tom spoke, but it looks like we used Tom quite a bit for council corner, not council corner, around-town videos. And that just shows how important Public Works is to our residents. It's always the, the big items, such as sand replenishment that, that Don Brown mentioned. Train horns, the water quality, huge issues trying to fix that. Lights, I remember when we changed all the lights on our arterials. Tom is, has been part of that for council and, and definitely starting the trolley. Tom was, was great working with him on that and starting the trolleys. And it's just, it's been, it's been really fun to work with Tom, and I have really enjoyed it, and I am going to miss him very much. So thank you for that great video. I was surprised how many times we used him for an around-town.
I'd like, I'd just like to add just a real class act. You know, had an indelible positive effect on the city, which you can't ask for more. And, you know, anything, interesting thing about Tom, he always had an answer, you know? No matter what the question was, he, he, he knew his stuff, and he always had, had a response and a willingness to follow up and address any issues that came up. So I understand he's got a wonderful opportunity up north closer to his, to his parents, and it makes a lot of sense. So he'll certainly be sorely missed, but I think it's a, it's a great move for Tom, and I wish him the best of luck.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to miss him a lot.
Next item on the agenda is Oral Communications, Part One. Members of the audience wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the city of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda. They do so during oral communications portion of the meeting. Speakers may address council once during either oral communications, Part One or Two. The total time limitation, thirty minutes allocated for oral communications, Part One. We do have a few cards. We have, in order that they will be speaking, are Carol Montgomery, Martina, and Jody Giles.
Hi, my name is Carol Montgomery, and I've been a resident of San Clemente for 27 years. Also, I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense and Every Town for Gun Safety, representing more than 200 supporters in San Clemente. We are not an anti-gun organization. We advocate for gun safety laws, safe storage, and programs to help prevent gun violence. We are a diverse group with gun violence survivors, Republicans, Democrats, veterans, law enforcement, and gun owners. I have a number of friends and family that own guns, and no one has ever tried to take their guns. That being said, I'd like to address a motion made by Mayor Pro Tim Jean James at the March 29th council meeting regarding making our city a Second Amendment sanctuary city. I understand that councilmember Noblock seconded that motion, and it was placed on the April 6th agenda and then deferred to tonight's council meeting. The proposal is not on the agenda tonight, but I'd like to make some comments, just in case it comes up again. I believe these types of resolutions are a recipe for chaos. They undermine the rule of law, lead to distrust in law enforcement, and confuse people. During COVID, and especially in this time of uncertainty, the last thing we should do is be introducing more chaos. Do we really want our Spanish Village by the Sea to be labeled, labeled with such a divisive title as a Second Amendment sanctuary city? Especially with the state of our country with more than 100 people killed by guns every day in America and a gun death after gun death in the news. Why not make our city a sanctuary for birds like our neighbor Laguna Beach? Making a city a sanctuary of anything is city business and deserves the attention of all city members, council members. Should our new slogan be, "Come and visit our city and don't forget your guns," instead of, "Don't forget your sunscreen"? Everyone is entitled to their own opinion, and you, you can like or dislike any law you want, but you just can't decide not to enforce laws you don't like. It's the job of our elected officials and law enforcement to follow the laws and the books. I believe, as many other residents do, that making our Spanish Village by the Sea a Second Amendment sanctuary city is a dangerous recipe for confusion and chaos, and we sincerely hope to not see this resolution come back up again. Thank you for your consideration.
First of all, I'd like to say that I think a lot of us look forward to tonight being able to make in-person comments. And what we have is very different from what we anticipated. What we have is half a dozen seats outside. A screen that we can't see because it's getting glare from the sun. We have wind, and we can't hear. So this isn't a public meeting by, by the greatest stretch of the imagination. It's, it's So this isn't a public meeting by, by the greatest stretch of the imagination. It's, it's woefully inadequate. And I'm, I'm gonna read an email I sent to all council members tonight, including, including Eric Sun, and it goes as this. "Good evening, council and staff. This email serves as notification for what I believe to be a violation of the Brown Act and Governor Newsom's executive order N. twenty-five-twenty. On April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, IMC Eric Sun is quoted as saying, 'You will now have the option of coming in person, but the email option will no longer be available since we're allowing people to make comments.'" "Allow people to come and provide their three-minute comments." "As per Newsom's order, physical presence is not required by council or staff to meet quorum for council meetings or for public to participate in said meetings. It is also my opinion that the change in venue indicates that this meeting is actually a teleconference with a central location, and therefore should allow public comments to be submitted electronically and read aloud, or to allow a member of the public to call in, which the city has never done." We're a little bit behind the times. "As for the city's website, if a disability impedes your access to the meeting, please see the last page of this agenda under the portion Americans with Disabilities Act. This section states the following: Pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, persons with a disability, including COVID-nineteen abdiments, who require a disability modification or accommodation in order to participate in the meeting, may request such modifications or accommodations from the city clerk." Okay? "notifications forty-eight hours prior to the meeting will enable the city to make reasonable ranges, such as providing auxiliary aids or service to assure accessibility in the meeting. It does not take forty-eight hours' notice to accommodate a comment submitted electronically. We've seen that before. There's no reason for this. I believe this is another violation of the ADA, again, a violation of the Brown Act, and a violation of Governor Newsom's order. In addition, I believe that the reasons behind this was to prevent the city or people from filibustering items on the agenda that invoke public passion and response. In conclusion, my conclusion of this is based on the following: On April seventh, Mayor Protem Jean James said on his Facebook page, 'Last night I deferred the vote on declaring San Clemente a two-way sanctuary city due to the overwhelming mail against a very organized anti-gun group.'"
Well, my three minutes are up. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jody Giles, and I'm representing the T Street neighborhood. I want to thank several of you for working with me in the past on the issue we're addressing. What I have here is a letter I sent to many of the council members and interim city manager Eric Sun on June, or February first of this year. It has a attached sixty-six signatures, a petition requesting that the city and the council take a look at the beach hours of T Street. T Street Beach and San Clemente beaches are the only beaches in Orange County that are open past ten PM. We have operating hours that close from twelve to four, and frankly, they're not enforced. We've had some improvement in enforcement, but I think there's some funding issues that make it difficult for either the sheriff or the state park rangers to come down and enforce parking. So I'm asking, please, look at the operating hours. The result is, we have lots of overnight camping. And it's not just homeless camping, and I get the plight of the homeless, and I'm not looking to make things worse. We have a lot of what I would call vacation camping. People in RVs coming down, camping overnight, and spending quite a few days there on their surf trips, which I get it. I'm not trying to restrict access to the beach. We all enjoy that. But we are a neighborhood. We are not a campground. So leaders, I request the following: Please review the, and act on our petition of sixty-six residents to align parking hours with the rest of the county, the entire county, and the state beaches, and our own San Clemente parks. And then second, please consider extending the geography of overnight parking restrictions in the T Street neighborhood to reduce overnight vehicle camping. And third, it'd be really great if we would enforce San Clemente Municipal City Code zero dot zero four dot one zero zero, which restricts overnight camping in front of residences. And finally, I will say, the way this is set up for public comment is really, it's not good. It's embarrassing. It's very cold out there. We can't hear this meeting, and we can't see it. So I think we can do better in the next meeting, and I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is that our last public comment?
It is.
Okay, thank you. I will just comment, respond to one of the commenters. The city of San Clemente is a bird sanctuary city already, so I wanted to clarify that. So Madam Clerk, what is our next item?
Next item, I would request a motion to waive reading of full of all resolutions and ordinances.
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Protem James and seconded by Councilmember No Block.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember No Block.
Aye.
Mayor Protem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Carrie's five-oh. Uh, next item is an opportunity to agendize items requiring immediate opportunity for immediate action.
Okay, next item. Close session.
Hearing none. Item five is closed session report from the city attorney.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mayor and Council. Wanted to report that on one item, under item A, council members No Block and Mayor Protem James and Councilmember Ferguson recuse themselves from, from that item. That also involved an item under B. The same three recuse themselves from one of those items. The council under A, in initiation of potential litigation involving memorial care, the council approved an extension to the twenty-nineteen standstill agreement with memorial care. That extends the deadlines in that agreement through, and the, the bar to action through June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. That agreement, once executed by the other side, will be available for public inspection. The motion for that approval was made by Councilmember Duncan, seconded by Mayor Protem James, and passed on a five-zero vote. There was unfinished business under closed session, so the council adjourned that portion of the meeting until later in these proceedings.
Thank you, city attorney.
Next item is the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council staff or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. And I don't have any requests for removal from the public.
All right.
Uh, six E, please.
Six E. Mayor Protem. Is there any other items? I'll entertain a motion to move the balance.
Second.
Who made that was that? Councilmember No Block, the motion?
Yes, with a second by Mayor Protem James.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember No Block.
Aye.
Mayor Protem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Carrie's five-oh to approve the balance of the consent calendar. The item that was removed is item E. That's contract award for the annual tree maintenance services.
The floor is yours.
It's, that's mine. I, I ultimately, at the end of this discussion, I, I will move to, to, I'll make a motion to approve it. But I do want to talk about it just a little bit. You know, one of my issues, I had several issues. Number one, Rods was a, was a, is a great company with San Clemente-based employees, San Clemente-based ownership. And I wanted to do everything I could to keep Rods. Well, it's just not to be. I, I had a conversation with, with Ricky in regards to this, and they understand, they, they pulled out. But the question I'm going to have for city management, whether it's Ziad or whether it's Mr. Sun, is when you look at, when you do a Google search on West Coast Arborists, there's a lot of stuff out there in regards to, they bid low and then add a lot of additional charges later. So my question for, for staff is going to be, what have we put in the contract to prevent that from occurring?
Mayor Protem, I'll, I'll, I'll attempt to answer that. So this will be a fixed contract price. Obviously, we will, you know, I'm gonna roughly estimate, Ziad can correct me. We, we trim on average about thirty-five hundred trees a year as part of our tree schedule. So that fixed price will be for that said defined scope. There will be a supplemental amount, much like a contingency construction contract for emergencies, whether it's palm trees falling down because of wind, or trees falling down because of whatever, or a diseased tree needed to be removed. Those would be done under the supplemental contract. But I can tell you that we, the city, will be very, very diligent in monitoring this contract to ensure that they stay compliant with their contract, but with the fixed price. That in itself will be a natural protector to control costs.
Okay, you brought up a, a, a good point. I'm starting to look at some of the palm trees, El Camino Reality Zone area. Are we, are we looking at those palm trees to do, do maintenance on them? It, it looks like some of them are really overdue.
I would defer to Ziad if he has any update as it relates to the palm trees on Del Mar.
No, I don't have an exact answer on the palm trees, but we, we have a price to trim trees, and, but I'm not sure if the palm trees were included. I, I can verify on that one.
So Mayor Protem, what I'll do tomorrow with the maintenance team is we'll, we'll do, we have an arborist on staff, Steve Fritsch, who's fantastic. We'll have him do an inspection of the palm trees on Del Mar to see if there's any that are deficient and need of service.
And I think it goes beyond Del Mar a little bit as well.
The T-zone area per se?
T-zone area, please.
And then I will be able to, at the next council meeting under city manager comments, provide an update to you on that, after they've had a chance to.
Yeah, I'm just worried about a windstorm coming up in.
I will tell you, if we, we witness a safety issue, we'll address the safety issue. We won't wait to report back.
You'll report back next, next week.
Absolutely.
So with that, unless anyone else has any other questions?
I have a.
Sure, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Councilmember No Block followed by Councilmember Ferguson.
My question is, either city manager or Ziad. Recently, the San Clemente, the Rancho San Clemente Homeowner Association received notice of tree removals, and because of the street damage, the branches that fall quite frequently with every windstorm, including the last one we had a day or so ago. You've clipped this large, you've clipped this branches that had fallen down. My, and it looked like the, it was a pretty substantial project. I guess my question is, if you're, if you know the answer to this, I'm not sure you do, because we haven't really discussed it at length, although I mentioned it very briefly, just moments, you know, hours ago, so I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. Or is the cost of that project included in the annual bid that West Coast Arbor?
I can answer the, this one. So the Belsero Street is a proposed project in next year's CIP budget. It is not part of this, uh, uh, tree trimming contract at all.
The only other concern is that the timeframe on this contract, we, we don't have an experience with this firm, and we're granting a five-year contract. I'm just wondering if an interim timeframe would be helpful.
I think, you know, I, I support staff's recommendation for five years as part of this process. And so if the council wanted to amend that staff recommendation, I would stand ready to accept. But at this time, staff supports five years. We've done a lot of work with three different procurement processes, and we've had a long delay in maintaining our tree maintenance services, which is important from a liability perspective. Of course, I'll take whatever council can give me, but staff's recommendation is five years.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Thanks, Mayor Ward. Um, council sets policy, and we did set a policy, decision-making, and a vote at the March sixteenth meeting to carry on with, out this contract until the end of the fiscal year. And I just want to bring to council's attention that we really need to make sure that when council gives directive, um, staff implements that. Because I've seen on numerous occasions, since being on council, that staff sometime will go in a different direction, and that's not proper, right? So we're here for a reason, and we set the policy, and staff implements it. And the minutes are included in today's agenda that do specifically indicate we were all in agreement at five to zero vote to authorize an additional twenty-five thousand as needed tree service contract with West Coast Arborists to fund emergency tree service, up with the interim city manager to be able to do that without coming to us for the remainder of the fiscal year. So needless to say, I was surprised to see that not be followed and to see us here tonight addressing a five-year contract, because that's not what we had voted on, agreed on, directed staff to do. So this is going against our policy and our votes, so it doesn't matter. So we need, that's my position tonight, so I'm not ready to vote on this for that reason. That's all I have. Thank you.
I think it's timely to do a vote tonight, because twenty-five thousand in emergency services is not getting us our annual cutting of thirty-five hundred trees, and it's starting to show by what council, Mayor Protem James mentioned about the palm trees, and they have to be cut every year in a rotating fashion, so we need to stay up with that, and we haven't done that. So Mayor Protem.
I, I have a, I have a quick comment related to that. I think there was slightly changed circumstances as well, too, because Rods dropped out of the running. So that was slightly different than we had before. But I, on that note, I want to just thank, thank Rods Tree Service. I think that's, it's apt to do at this point for, for years of remarkable service. And obviously, they'll still be involved in the community. And, but, you know, I'm gonna support this because I think it makes financial sense, and we need to get that tree service in place, like you're saying, Mayor Ward. We can't continue to operate on an interim basis when we have contract ready to go.
So thank you for pointing that out. I think that did change the circumstances, and we do appreciate the, the relationship that we've had with Rods and the fact that they approached us and said that they were dropping out of the bid. We do appreciate that. They are a class act, as you say, and we, we care about them. So with that.
I may make a point of clarification on that letter from Rods Tree Service. No, I'm all about policy and everybody staying in their lane. And the fact that this letter came in in between council meetings still doesn't change the five-oh vote on extending the rest of this this year through June thirty, twenty-twenty-one on an as-needed basis. So we are not properly following not only our policies and directives, but we're letting staff run the show, and we're not properly noticing it involving the public in that, because, you know, public members may have assumed, oh, we're not bringing the tree service contracts back till would have been first meeting in June or late May for a July first start. So therefore, this, this is, I think, improper. Thank you. All right, so.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, thank you.
I may make a motion to approve and authorize Public Works Director, City Engineer to execute contract C twenty-one dash and by, between the city of San Clemente and West Coast Arborists Incorporated, providing for tree, tree trimming services for a period of April twentieth, twenty-twenty-one through June thirty, twenty-twenty-five, with a base contract amount not to exceed one point three zero five million dollars, and authorize the Public Works Director and City Engineer to approve annual increases to propose unit rates and fees not to exceed the consumer pricing deck adjustment except A of, E, excuse me, of the agreement. Second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Protem James and a second by Councilmember Duncan.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
No.
Councilmember No Block.
Aye.
Mayor Protem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Carrie's four to one.
And can I say for the record that when items are agendized on every single agenda, that is publicly rehearsed, that an item is being considered?
Madam, before we continue, can I ask, if the IT or city manager, if we can have the volume turned up on the speakers, I'm having a really hard time hearing Chris and Ward's comments. I don't know if there's a speaker or if it's just through the, through the air.
No, I appreciate you making that point of order. That, that's a good time to do that. So, um, so our next item, um.
Yes, moving on to public hearings. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed ten minutes. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed ten minutes. Captain money not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues and act upon the matter by motion. This evening's public hearing is to consider the analysis and update of the city's inclusionary housing program and inclusionary. And we do have speakers. And I will name those in order. Let's see, Father Bill Barman. Judy Jones, Donna the Dream. Denise Fry. Steve, I think that says. And Bill Kootenjer.
Okay, so we'll be taking public comments on this before we have a staff presentation.
It's up to you. And then there will be another speaker, Kathy Espahani.
Good evening. I'm Father Bill Barman. I'm the senior priest, our lady of Fatima Catholic Church in San Clemente. I'm here tonight to speak about affordable housing. As one who's probably paid taxes for over forty years and paid developer fees for the same forty. As I raise money to build churches, convents, schools. And I'm glad to do that. Looking around the city, you can see we spent that money well. There's wonderful parks, schools. I was here during the rains. Rains got put where they needed to go. It's all well done. What we don't have here is enough affordable housing so that those who work here can also live here. For those who retire on a fixed income can live here. You have a wonderful fee possibility at your disposal to ask developers to pay fifteen percent of. The cost of their project to put away, but not to dedicate fifteen percent of their project for low income housing or to pay in lieu fees. And ours right now are stayed here in the city very low. I'd like to see them go to ten or fifteen percent. Cost of the project so that people of all income levels can reside and celebrate the good life here in San Clemente. Thanks for your consideration of this.
Judy Jones is next.
Good evening. I was hoping to see you in person, but this is a very strange situation. My name's Judy Jones and I'm a resident of San Clemente for the past twenty five years. Also, I have been a member of the League of Women Voters in different states and places. For probably forty years. So I tonight am going to read a letter from the League of Women Voters of Orange Coast. San Clemente is one of the cities amongst this league and there are fifteen other cities. So this is to the city manager, members of the city council, the Orange Coast League of Women Voters with members living in San Clemente. And a member of the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition is asking the city council to adopt policies and programs. That will produce affordable housing for the city's lower income residents, including the homeless. Homelessness and housing insecurity is a growing concern in Orange County. This problem must be humanely addressed for the benefit of our communities, these individuals and families, and for our society as a whole. The league feels a new approach is needed, one that is similar to other Orange County cities. That have housing policies with an average inclusion inclusionary requirement of fifteen percent. Therefore, we ask that the required inclusionary housing policy for San Clemente also be fifteen percent. Divided between low, very low and extremely low AMI. Based on the city's performance in the present regional housing needs assessment RHNA goals. The current four percent inclusionary requirement will not provide adequate housing to meet either the current or future needs of San Clemente residents. Although the city does not build housing, you do have the responsibility to provide the framework and opportunity for housing to be built. Therefore, in addition, we ask that the in lieu fee be increased. Ten dollars to fifteen dollars per square foot or in the range of ten thousand to fifteen thousand per unit. These fees at this level are needed to encourage developers and builders to increase the production of low income housing. Or alternatively, finance gap funding for production of affordable housing by alternate sources and sites. In support of the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition and league members residing in San Clemente. We ask that the housing element policy be updated to encourage success in meeting the housing needs of the residents of your city. Diane Need and Chris Collins, co-chair Housing Homeless Advocacy Team, League of Women Voters, Orange Coast.
Donna the Dream is next.
You, as our elected officials, are obligated by state law to provide housing opportunities to all income levels. Our city's vision includes establishing and maintaining a diversity of residential neighborhoods and housing opportunities. I stand before you this evening to support the proposed amendments by city staff and our San Clemente City Planning Commission. The study sessions have been informative and well presented. I enthusiastically support planning of additional housing units in the four identified income levels. This will provide opportunity that is needed for additional housing in San Clemente. City staff in the City Planning Commission has identified parcels of land for potential rezoning. Where housing is suitable to meet our housing needs to include affordable housing needs in the future. In recent years, our city did not meet the requirements to plan for housing needs. If the city does not meet the responsibility for planning future housing needs in San Clemente. Taxpayer money possibly up to three hundred thousand dollars per month and grant money to support necessary city programs will be wasted. The courts then can, the courts can then mandate necessary rezoning and suspend the city's ability to issue building permits. Another mess with litigation costs. Increase the in lieu fee to support the development of required affordable housing units. The zoning amendment supports the city's goal to provide housing opportunities for all income levels. City leaders have correctly identified that low income or affordable housing will not increase crime rates. Research found low income housing developments built within high income areas with a low minority population. Did not see a rise in crime. Affordable housing supports local workers whose annual income would permit them to rent or buy in affluent cities like San Clemente. People benefiting from affordable housing includes our teachers, service providers, our children. I ask you to follow the recommendations of city staff and the recommendations of our city's planning commission. To bring diversity and inclusivity to our San Clemente neighborhoods and community life. When housing costs are more affordable and housing opportunities are more readily available. There is a lower likelihood of households becoming homeless and households that do become homeless can exit homelessness more quickly. And with greater likelihood of sustaining that housing long term. Thank you for your time and attention and I'll look forward to the to the planning session presented tonight and the votes by city council. Thank you.
Next speaker is Denise Fry.
Thank you. I have bad handwriting. My name is Denise Flurry, just just in case you're going to hunt me down later. Um, I, my name is Denise Flurry. I've been a San Clemente resident for twenty two years. I am here tonight as a member of the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition. Which consists of organizations and individuals that advocate for adoption of policies and programs that will produce. Affordable housing for the city's lower income residents and workers. We recommend that San Clemente adopt a policy requiring fifteen percent inclusionary housing. With seven point five percent at low income and seven point five percent at very low. And we also recommend that they adopt adopt in lieu fees in the range of ten to fifteen dollars per square foot. Or ten thousand to fifteen thousand dollars per unit. The report of the city's own consultant EPS supports a fifteen percent inclusionary housing with. Sorry, I skipped a line. Supports a fifteen percent inclusionary requirement for San Clemente's housing program. That report states that for the three key scenarios modeled. That even if the project were required to provide fifteen percent of units as affordable. As required under the current zoning ordinance, it would still provide reasonable profit for the developers. At low income, a family of four qualifies with income up to a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars a year. A family of two with incomes up to eighty two thousand dollars a year. Who is this? It's teachers, nurses, public employees, postal workers, our grandkids, young people just getting started. But if you take the recommendation for the inclusionary housing proposal of four percent. This option will not will have been eliminated from this whole group of people who deserve to get a chance to live in our city if they want to. A low income is a family of four qualifies with income. A very low income family qualifies up to sixty four thousand dollars of income. A family of two qualifies at up to forty four thousand dollars of income. Who is this? Essential workers, grocery workers, as well as restaurant, retail and hotel workers. This can hurt our city's small businesses when these workers can't have a stable home home situation. Due to the lack of affordable housing and have to commute. Other orange cities, some of them are neighbors, have adapted housing policies with a fifteen percent inclusionary requirement and in lieu fees of ten to fifteen. Many have exceeded their above moderate arena housing goals while making good progress towards also building at lower income levels. The current proposal before the council is inadequate. Thank you for my for my dear time.
It's Steve. I think that's Lamont.
Sounds like me. Council, there we go. Councilmembers, Mayor, thank you so much. Steve Lamott, Building Industry Association of Orange County. I am here to oppose item seven eight tonight. We would like this policy to remain the same, which is the four percent. I know there's some clarification. Issues going on with the zoning ordinance as well as the housing element. We are in in support of rightsizing that policy. However. I did submit a letter on behalf of BIA, the California Apartment Association, the Orange County Business Council, the Orange County Taxpayers Association, the Manufactured Housing Educational Trust. As well as the South Orange County Economic Coalition. If you'll bear me, I do want to reiterate a couple of those points. Housing, as you know, remains a critical issue in California and has been said multiple times already tonight. Studies show that the state needs about a hundred and eighty thousand new units as well, and we are only really producing about eighty thousand on average. The governor wants to see about five hundred thousand units per year. This has caused a cascading spike in housing prices across the region. On top of that. We already, we were now obviously going through a global pandemic, which is made everybody. Want want housing, want to be in housing, of course. And when this pandemic is over, we still will be in a housing supply crisis. And we, along with many of our builder members, have stated multiple times that added fees will add to the development process. It will add to the price of a home. It could stifle development and obvious and then ultimately create less housing. Our letter goes on to cite several studies with one being the California Legislative Analyst Office. That state that this approach, inclusionary zoning, does very little to address the underlying cause of California's housing. Housing crisis, which is a housing shortage. And I know you've heard this multiple times through the letters that I've submitted through the study sessions. But I do just want to touch on a couple of specific issues with the policy itself. First, approving inclusionary zoning policy does nothing. For the city to meet its regional housing needs assessment requirement by the state of California. Cities are only required to zone and plan for the assigned units, so I did want to make sure that was clear. And while this policy may be less burdensome than your surrounding cities. Most cities in Orange County do not even have this policy. So it actually puts you in the minority in terms of this policy specifically. Furthermore, and probably our most serious concern. This fee, if I'm looking at the staff report correctly and I'm doing my math correctly, take that with a grain of salt. But this would constitute a three hundred and sixty nine to four hundred and thirty three percent increase from your current inclusionary zoning fee to what it is proposed today. This is on top of the endless other fees, the expensive time process and the uncertainty just to entitle and develop a housing unit. It's also, again, we are facing a staggering housing supply crisis escalating prices. And adding more fees and more regulation to that process will only hurt it. It is important to note that the city of Santa Ana recently just reduced their inclusionary zoning fee by sixty six percent. It was at fifteen dollars a square foot. They lowered it to five and my time is up. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Bill Kootenjer.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. A lot of people have been up here with really great data. And for those of you who know me, you know I like data. I've done a couple of presentations for you before. But I don't have any data today. I just wanted to tell you about. Kind of my experience moving to California several years ago. I was in a tough spot, just divorced, sole custody of my three kids. They were six, four and two at the time. And we, I was fortunate enough to transfer with a job managing a hardware store, made about forty five thousand a year. I was fortunate to find a apartment in San Juan Capistrato that was in its last six months of their bonded inventory program. And we we took it and moved in. And I I'm an extremely blessed and fortunate guy, because when those six months ended, I got a promotion. And of course, rent went up, not quite to market rate, but substantially. Six months after that, it went up again. And I got a better job. Right? Again, I am a very lucky guy. But that's not a sustainable model. And not everybody's going to be as lucky as I've been. I'm also very blessed to have family in there that was able to help. But if I barely made, oh, and by the way, I've lived in San Clemente now for over two years. My tech tax assessment is higher than average. Got a modest home, you know, on the ocean side of the freeway, doing pretty good. But I got there because I got a chance at affordable housing. And by the grace of God, I was able to stay housed when that opportunity went away. And people need affordable housing desperately in this community. It's not for new people coming in from out of the area. It's for people here right now who are doubled up, staying with their parents. Staying with friends, living in their cars or living too far away to be practical for a local job. So I I just hope that you you guys will seriously consider. Changing what the planning commission recommended to increase those amounts. And if developers think it's too hard to develop here, there's some great nonprofit developers that'll build affordable housing here for you. So I'm sure they'd like to take that opportunity. But it's, you know, the four, the four percent is not enough. We need to do more. And it is up to you guys to create the environment and the policies that will enable that housing to be built. And I hope you'll do that today. Thank you.
Next is Kathy Espahani.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Espahani. I'm a member of the California. I'm sorry. I've been running all day. I'm a member of the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition. I live in North Beach, a thirty year homeowner here. It's it's really something to follow that last speaker. That was a very compelling story. And I hope it makes you realize what we're talking about. We're talking about real human need of people who live in our community. Kids go to the schools here. When families have to pay too much for rent, families suffer. And it's time for San Clemente to get serious about providing affordable affordable housing for its people. We're here because. The proposed changes to the existing inclusionary ordinance are just not strong enough. Obviously, the existing ordinance doesn't work. But the problem is the changes need to be much more significant. So that we can have a truly effective ordinance. The first problem, as several people have pointed out, is that the four percent. Inclusionary requirement is way too low. It's an aberration. True, not every city in Orange County has an inclusionary ordinance, but guess what? In this housing element planning period, a lot of cities are. Adopting ordinances for the first time and some are. adopting ordinances for the first time and some are strengthening their ordinances. San Clemente should strengthen its ordinance. The 4% in, in the EPS report, they say that it is less than half of the lowest inclusionary ordinance in our neighboring cities. The other problem, and EPS also points out that the market can bear a 15% inclusionary requirement. That is the standard. It's interesting that the BIA representative said that if you raise in lieu fees and if you raise the inclusionary requirement, then housing won't get built. Well, that just is not true. Look at Irvine, for example. Irvine is a city with the most robust housing development in Orange County, and it has a very strong inclusionary ordinance. There are lots of other examples. So your own consultant has told you that you can adopt a 15% inclusionary requirement and it will not impede market development. We need a stronger ordinance and so you should raise it to 15%. The in lieu fee, I applaud the fact that it is being raised. It's again, very interesting that the BIA representative is shocked that there'll be like a 300 or 400% increase over the existing fees. Well, you know what that means? The fees are way too low. That means nothing. Builders have been getting a free ride in San Clemente. They have the advantage of building in this beautiful community, very successful developments. They need to share some of the benefit with the people. Thank you.
That's all the speakers. Madam Mayor, if you'd like to close the public hearing.
Okay, officially, I'm closing the public hearing. And we have our staff here. And so I would ask, is there a short presentation for, for the council?
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council members. Staff does have a short presentation this evening. We also have our consultants available to answer any questions. Next slide, please. This evening, we want to briefly go over the city's housing strategy and then talk about the recommendation that's before you this evening, including, including the inclusionary housing program, the alternative or optional in lieu fee, and the zoning ordinance amendments. Next slide, please. So first, the San Clemente's housing strategy. We, staff wanted to distinguish two housing elements. We have our existing fifth cycle housing element, and that has 17 programs, most of which are ongoing, a few which are completed, and then the one before you this evening in progress. And part of that program is to update that inclusionary housing program. It's only one piece of our efforts or our housing strategy for the city of San Clemente, and that's reflected in that it's one of 17 programs. And then we don't want to pass up the opportunity to to reflect that we did hear during study sessions and meetings that for the sixth cycle, our upcoming housing element update, for staff to look at additional programs, including ADUs or accessory dwelling units, streamlining the approval process, and removing impediments to developing housing. Next slide, please. So with that said, and the context that this is one tool that we have, the planning commission made three recommendations, and those are to update the inclusionary housing program itself, modify the in lieu fee methodology, and amend the zoning ordinance. Next slide, please. For the inclusionary housing program changes, we wanted to briefly touch on two components of that. One begins on page 7A48 of your packet, and that's the process to award the funds. If you go back to our existing housing element, it does provide some detail that this update should provide some additional information, priorities, criteria, and a process to award those funds. The other key element to updating the program is to update the actual text that's included in the fifth cycle housing element. And that proposed, those proposed text amendments or changes rather, begin on page 7A56 of your packet. Next slide, please. The optional or alternative in lieu fee changes include updating the methodology to make sure that it more closely reflects the subsidy that's required to construct a very low income housing unit. It provides one calculation to provide a clear methodology to developers, applicants, and staff. And it would be updated annually based on a national index, similar to what's used with our building permit fees. And then finally, that in optional in lieu fee would be applied per square foot to provide equity between smaller and larger units where a smaller unit, smaller in terms of square foot, would result in a smaller affordable housing in lieu fee. Next slide, please. And then finally, our zoning ordinance changes. The key change here is making sure that our zoning ordinance is consistent with our program, which if you support the recommendations tonight would stay at 4%. And so that key change is amending the zoning ordinance to reflect 4% instead of the 15% that's in there now. And to clarify, this is the number of units that are required for applicable housing developments. Next slide, please. To reiterate, the planning commission's recommendation is threefold: updating the inclusionary housing program, the in lieu fee, and the zoning ordinance. In order to do this before you this evening, you'll find that there are three parts to the city council recommend, recommended action. And that includes adopting an ordinance, update the program and the zoning ordinance, as well as a resolution regarding the fee. This concludes staff presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Okay. Is there any council members that would like to start?
I'll start. All right. Ms. Savage, the 4%, is there, is there a state minimum on that?
No.
So if this council wanted to do 2%, we could do 2% if we wanted to.
Yes.
Okay. And then the $7.36 in lieu fee. Where, where did you get that number? Can you explain the methodology of that number? And I'm sure it's in here buried somewhere, but if you could help me out, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, so I'll try and provide a, a short description, and then we have the consultants if you need additional information. So that square footage fee comes from calculating what's called the affordability gap. And that's taking the cost to construct a very low income housing unit compared to the value of that unit. And that gap or that subsidy in between is then broken down into a square foot comparison instead of a hundred, couple hundred thousand dollar comparison.
And the impact to the city, if we were to, to reduce your, this number, all they would do is reduce our in lieu fee fund. Is that correct?
Yes.
And how is that in lieu fee fund used?
It supports the development of affordable housing. So if you take a look at some of our developments across the city, you'll see that we've actually supported, the city has supported the development of affordable housing, either units or projects themselves with these fees.
And how much, how much have we doled out to, in, in support of affordable housing in the, in the past year?
Nothing to affordable housing in the past year. Our most recent project was around 2015, and the community development director may be able to help me with that.
And I, as I understand, there's about $2 million in that fund today.
Correct.
All I have right now. I may have something else.
All right.
I have some questions.
Go ahead, councilmember Noblock. Okay. I mean, I'm sorry. I was looking at you, and that's why I said your name. Councilmember Duncan.
Sure.
I'll get used to this.
I have one point to make and then a couple of questions for our, our consultants. It may take a little work. So one thing that's come to, that I've come to realize in looking at this is you kind of can't take the percentage of affordable housing units and the in lieu fee separately. They're completely related. I think at this point, where it's clear our, our in lieu fee is too low because everybody does the in lieu fee. Nobody actually builds the 4%. They, 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 they find it, developer finds it cheaper to pay the in lieu fee, so they'll do that. So there has to be a balance struck, or you're sort of undercutting yourself with the in lieu fee. We're getting so little money in the in lieu fees. We can't really do anything big. We do have $2 million, but you know, clearly the system's out of balance because no one's actually building the units. They're all paying the in lieu fee. So the in lieu fee needs to be raised. But, you know, you don't want those two to be out of balance. So I guess I'll just cut to the, the question because it may take some work for the consultants. But if we did go with the 15% that was suggested, where 7.5% was divided, with 7.5 was very low income and 7.5 was low income. Of course, right now we have 4% of very low income and nothing for low income. If we did go with that, what, what would be the, having set the stage, what would be the comparable in lieu fee there that would make up the gap but would also be balanced such that it, you know, it's not so low that everyone would just pay the in lieu fee and no one would actually do the development? Can we, and if it takes some time, let me know. But I'd be interested in hearing what that figure is. Obviously, I think it would have to be higher than, than probably even the $10.85 that you came up with as what the market could sustain with our 4% in lieu fee for very low income. So I'd be interested in hearing if you, you have a figure there, just to get the idea of it. And then as you're figuring that out, just to follow up on the, I think that one of the points that was made, can our development market sustain a an inclusionary percentage of 15% of affordable housing? And, you know, the, with the comparable in lieu fee, or would that stifle development such that to do the point that the one gentleman made, there would be no more development of any housing? And we would be, we would be having our overall housing shortage, not just an affordable housing shortage.
All right. Again, I'm Darren Smith with Economic and Planning Systems. Thank you for the question. Jennifer Savage, we did anticipate this question. Do you happen to have slides that we can share?
Yes, thank you. We have city staff that can pull up the consultant item 7A slides.
I'd like to make one comment, if that's okay, while the slides are being pulled up, just to councilmember Duncan's point, and I'm Julie Cooper, also with EPS. Part of the reason why the choice is being made to pay the fee rather than the units is that the fee that's being charged now is not actually based on the subsidy that is needed. It's based on 1% of construction value as described by your, as deemed by your building department. And as we showed in our report, that itself is significantly lower than even the fee based on a 4% inclusionary requirement that's based on the actual subsidy needed. So that's one aspect of this imbalance that you are alluding to.
Thank you, Julie. The slides are up on the screen now, and this first one shows that if you are building a very low income rental unit, which your inclusionary housing ordinance requires, we estimate that the cost of, to construct that is a little over $400,000. The value of that unit, based on the very low income rent, which is well below market rent, is only about $160,000. So we have estimated that there's about a $260,000 per unit subsidy required for those very low income units. The subsequent slide shows the calculations of how you get from that $260,000 per unit, per affordable unit subsidy to the in lieu fee per square foot. And we'll focus on the bottom section here. If you have a 100-unit project, and I know not every project would be 100 units, but that's just to make the math work. You have 100-unit project of single-family homes with an average size of 2,800 square feet and four bedrooms. That's 400 bedrooms. Your requirement, your inclusionary requirement says that 4% of all bedrooms in the project must be in affordable units. So you can't build all four-bedroom market rate units and then satisfy your requirement with just four, 4% one-bedroom units, for example. So in this case, you have 100-unit project with 400 total bedrooms. You need to provide 4% of those as affordable. That's 16 bedrooms. If each of the affordable units that you're meeting the requirement with has an average of two bedrooms, then that means you're required to build eight two-bedroom apartments to satisfy your 4% requirement. The total subsidy for each of those units is around $260,000. So the total subsidy for those eight units combined is a little over $2 million. If you've got 100 units at 2,800 square feet apiece, then that's 280,000 square feet of market rate units by the $2 million of total subsidy by that 280,000 square feet of market rate housing, that gets you to the $7.36 fee. I believe it was councilmember James that asked that earlier, how we got to that figure. This is an illustration of that. The top section does the same math, but for multifamily. And because those units are smaller, the fee per square foot actually shows up being a little bit higher. And so we and staff are recommending that you would use the lower fee so that you're not in effect penalizing the smaller, more affordable by design units, but rather all units would be subject to the same fee at $7.36 per square foot. Now, this corresponds to your existing program of 4% of housing at very low income units. The subsequent slides show the math that you were asking about, councilmember Duncan, where we would split the affordable units between very low income and low income. You have the same math on the very low income units, but the low income units, because they can rent for significantly higher than the very low income units, you only have a $45,000 subsidy required for each of those. So when you blend those together, you end up with about $150,000 per unit, per affordable unit average subsidy. And so to, you asked about the, the 15% option. Is that correct, councilmember?
Yes. There's sort of different models. So there's 15% where, you know, it's up to the developer to blend whatever percent low versus, but I think most of the comments have said they would like to see 7.5% very low and 7.5% low.
Okay, then we'll advance two slides and I'll show you what that looks like. So this one is the 10%. Now we're on the 15%, same kind of structure. In the bottom section there, we would calculate using the same logic, but swapping out 15% for 4% with an average subsidy for, per affordable unit at $150,000 or so. Now your fee per square foot is $16.24 rather than $7.36. And so we've, we've done the math for you, for your consideration, and it would, of course, go up. You have a higher percentage of units at affordable. And so the subsidy required would be greater. Now, you also asked whether we feel that that would be too much, that housing development would slow down. And our math shows that for an average project, getting kind of the average current market rate pricing in San Clemente, it should be able to absorb that level of fee or that level of inclusionary requirement and still be profitable for a developer. That said, we also know that the amount of land for development in San Clemente is limited. And so there may not be as much happening as might otherwise because it will be harder to make it pencil, to make it feasible with a higher requirement. But our math shows that overall, most projects should be able to absorb a 15% requirement if you're inclined to do so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, councilmember Noblock.
Two questions and then a comment. First of all, this is to staff. Does our, the ADUs that are being permitted First of all, this is to staff. Does our the ADUs that are being permitted in town, does that qualify for the low income house?
Yes, but I'll defer to Jennifer.
Yes, Councilmember, ADUs do qualify in all income categories, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate.
Thank you. My next question is, what's the criteria for distributing the $2 million in the low income housing fund that we currently have?
Yeah, that.
That wants to build one and qualify. Do they apply? What's your decision process and how much money you give them in this process?
Yeah, so we're proposing to modify the program so that it's clear what our process and criteria are. And that information begins on your packet page 7A49. And there's three components to that. And the first is priorities. The second is criteria. And then the third is the process. In terms of priorities, we will look at the type of construction. So that would be apartments, single family dwelling or rehabilitating existing housing units, as well as the type of families or population. And that includes family households, senior headed, senior headed households, et cetera. And then we would use those priorities to look at criteria for each project. So those priorities, as well as whether they're using other funding, the percentage of affordable units and how long those affordable units would stay affordable. And the applicant's demonstrated history of managing or developing those projects.
And how much money are we talking for, let's say, a developer of an ICU? What what is your formula? How much? What does that equal in terms of dollar contribution to their project?
It will depend on the project in terms of sizing.
And everything depends. I'm trying to get a sense of how much. And you can give a magnitude scale answer or a range, but what are we talking? $10, $1,000, $20,000, a percentage of the construction cost? What what kind of numbers are we looking at? Your best estimate.
Based on conversations with affordable housing developers or nonprofit organizations, they've said that they would need about $100,000 per door or per unit to help develop those affordable units.
Okay, so theoretically, we have fun for about 20, about 20 units if they were ADUs well dedicated to.
In theory.
Right, approximately. Okay. Thank you. I guess my my thinking on this, Madam Mayor, is that I I'm in favor of determining the the project is categorically exempt. I'm in favor of the ordinance and the resolution, but I'm not in favor of increasing fees. I think fees actually do increase the cost of construction. We're talking about creating government subsidized units. And I think the solution isn't more government subsidized units, but rather a solution that involves removing fees, removing impediments, allowing free marketplace to to fill this need. So I'm in favor of the three items, but without any increase in fees.
Can I say one thing? I I would be more in favor of reducing the 4% to 2% and reducing the 7.36 to to 3.68. We we reduce everything by half.
So let me ask staff a question based on that. Ms. Savage, we're trying to make the fees based on something. And so we looked at that it was a around a $260,000 subsidy that we needed for every unit because of the cost of and what the rent would be. And that's how we came out with the 7.36 for the in lieu fee. It's it's subsidizing that cost. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're trying to base it on something. Is that part of our housing requirement that we have with HCD that our in lieu fee is based on on something? Some criteria?
HCD does not dictate that. That's common practice with the inclusionary housing in Lufy. What the state does require is that we provide alternatives. So instead of requiring the developer to provide the affordable units within their project, we have to provide alternatives more often than not. That includes an in lieu fee.
Okay, so let me ask this really quick. You know, I do understand what council member Duncan was was speaking of, you know, trying to get. And it's really trying to get units built. And it's really exciting when you look at 100 units are possible. But in San Clemente, we just don't have, we don't have land for that. And why the in lieu fee is a tool that we have used in the past very successfully since 1980, we've been collecting some of these fees is because we now we're at the point where we don't have, we don't have housing tracks to go in. Talega was very good about doing the affordable housing and they built it, but they had an entire development in order to do that. And I believe Marblehead also did that. And then the city's been very good about doing senior housing. We've had two different projects go through since 2000 and 2010, where we used our in lieu fees to build to help with those projects. So we don't have any more any large developments. And that's why we have to collect fees and piecemeal it together. And then we might be able to either encourage someone to to build very small units somewhere a little at a time. We're not going to have any big, any big development of affordable housing unless some houses are taken out, you know, and those lots become available. So, you know, I understand what people are saying, like, you know, let's go for 15% because we're going to get something. But they're not taking into account how this works in San Clemente and the land problem that we have. And the one question that I do have is why do we look at six units or more? I'm not sure why we have that requirement, that it that in lieu fee would only kick in at six units. Why is that?
So when the inclusionary housing program was first established in San Clemente, it actually applied to 10 or more units. But it was in previous iterations of the program that the city determined that it should apply to six or more.
So it it sounds something like prior councils wanted to say that these were developers and that it was okay to charge them for affordable housing if it was, you know, a larger number, which which was possible at the time. But I don't know if it's possible anymore. Looking at six units, that's probably not going to happen all that often that this fee gets paid. And so I'm wondering if if the council was to consider any lowering of the fees. I think it should be based on something. But maybe it should be anytime that someone builds more than a single family home. Maybe it it could be from two or more. If it was a smaller fee, but it maybe it would add up. But, you know, that hasn't been brought up in any of the study sessions, and we haven't had any comments on that. So I'm a little concerned removing that and lowering it. I think the 7.36, one of the comments from the builders that went through the study session was that our fee had to be predictable so that they knew builders, developers knew what they were going to have. And and what we are doing tonight does that. What was bad is our zoning said 15%, but our fee was 4%. And so that was just kind of something that happened a few years ago and never got modified. So tonight, you heard Mr. Lamont mention it. It's good that we have some clarification of our zoning code because we we need to do that tonight. But I think it is important to look at the in lieu fees as council member Noblock said, we have about $2 million. There is some, because, you know, not very many units are going to be built from now on in San Clemente. We have opportunities to maybe look at market rate apartment buildings that that we could try and help someone nonprofit get to to have very low income housing. You know, that is something that that maybe we might be able to actually do and and get more units. So you know, if it was based on something, I think I could get there. But I like that it's based on the square footage so that smaller units aren't paying as much as, you know, we're not just looking at 1% of what the market rate of their property is. We actually looked at what they built. So I'm not against, you know, the planning commission went through this. I'm not against the 7.36. I just, if we were going to lower it at all or talk about it, I think then we should lower the amount of units in order to make up the difference. If that is any type of compromise, but it's not following what the what staff is recommending from from all of the study and the meetings with with everyone. I'm not going to be for the 15%. I don't think we need to to do that. It's it's kind of a you know, there there are people that are asking for it or thinking that we're going to have these big housing tracks and we're going to see all this money and we're just, we don't have that coming up in San Clemente. We have infill development. Maybe four units at a time, maybe six, maybe eight, you know, depending on the project, if people combine lots. And we we have made our our affordable housing in our last housing limit, we zoned El Camino Real, if everyone remembers. That was our mixed use. You know, and we zoned the entire park could be zoning. So that's just comments for council.
I have a question still, Mayor Ward, if I may?
If you can just wait one second. Let me just clarify a couple of things that people said. I would like staff, Jennifer, if you can answer this. Is there in our housing element, is there a category for extremely low? Someone brought that up in public comments.
Go ahead. In our in our housing element, we account for extremely low in the very low income category.
So it is included, but it's in the very low. Okay, that's a good clarification. Is the city of San Clemente obligated by state law to provide housing for all income levels? Are we obligated to provide it? That's the question.
We're obligated to plan for housing, but not to build the housing.
Okay, that was a comment that we heard earlier. Are we rezoning areas for affordable housing?
We are for our sixth cycle or our housing element update effort, which is separate from this. We are considering and asking for feedback regarding potential rezoning, not just for affordable housing, but for all income levels.
Okay, but you're calling it rezoning, and I want to get to what it's actually called so that the public knows that. It's a zoning overlay. Is that correct?
Correct. So we're looking at the specific rezoning would be a housing overlay, which is would be different than our affordable housing overlay.
It would be, say that again, it would be different than our housing overlay?
Than our affordable housing overlay. We do have an affordable housing overlay mainly along El Camino Real.
Okay, so this this is in addition to that that zoning. But we're not changing the zoning that is currently at these lots. We're just adding an overlay that if someone in the future came in and wanted to do affordable housing, they could look at these locations.
Correct.
Okay, so I wanted to get to that because somebody mentioned that we were actually rezoning, which people, I just know how our the public thinks, and they're going to think that we're rezoning the current zoning from that.
It's a good point. So if it was commercial, it doesn't mean that you'd knock down the commercial building because now it's residential. You just allow residential if the market can sustain a developer doing that at that location potentially.
Yes. Our city and our council were required to do is plan. We're trying to plan where housing maybe could go in the future. So those are most of the comments that I had. So Councilmember Ferguson.
Oh, thanks. But on that note regarding the the zoning, it'd be really good to deal with this when we're able to be together for community workshops. That's the way to do it because then all this ambiguities don't happen because we we really got flooded with emails regarding this. It was very alarming to people. So hopefully we can do that when everyone can get together in workshops and we can better explain that, have people be part of that process. But I have a question, Ms. Savage. Excellent job on your report and the consultants. It was a very good read, so thanks for putting that together. Now, for the inclusionary housing program at 4%, this applies to only new developments, new developments with six or more units. Now, is there anything prohibiting us from applying this to existing developments? Say there's an existing development and there's room, right? There's room on that lot, or maybe the owner has an adjacent lot. And we add on to that. So it's not new developments. It's it's basically adding on to existing development. Would that apply so we can get some more of those affordable housing units?
That is a really good question, and bear with me. I'm just checking our text so I don't speak incorrectly.
While you're looking, Councilmember Ferguson, do you have a development in mind when you give that example?
This just came to my mind after listening to all the speakers and the deliberation. I didn't think about this question earlier, but it would help us if there is, right? Because we do see some lots in town. Actually, they're sprinkled throughout town. I don't know who owns them, but they're there. And even if there was, as we're seeing happen in in many cities, is when there's commercial development on the bottom, right? And then residential on the top. So if there's a substantial number, well, over six, that are added in units, we can get numbers that way. But again, we're adding on to existing development. So as it's written in the report, this doesn't apply.
Yeah, so that that is quite ambiguous. And you could explicitly state in the code or in the program that it applies to existing developments adding six or more units.
Oh, good. That would be helpful. That would benefit us. Thank you for looking that up.
Yes, go ahead.
I struggle with government involving themselves in impeding the free enterprise system. Some of these speakers got up today and talked about how the about developer's profitability. That's what capitalism is about, profitability, about maximum profitability. For us to take that from the developer concerns me. I will not vote for a 4% or $7.36. We we are a generous people. And I would be willing to propose a 2% number and $3.68 in in lieu fee. But I this is, for me, this is too high of a number to go. And it certainly impedes the private enterprise system we have here in San Clemente. And with that, I would just like to read something. And this is from the savior of Western civilization, Sir Winston Churchill. Socialism is a philosophy of failure, the creed of ignorance, and the gospel of envy. Its inherent virtue is the equal sharing of misery. And that's what these advocates want. They want us to have an equal share of misery, and we can one day look like Long Beach or San Francisco or LA. So I have significant concerns about going down this road. But I I will go with 2% and $3.68. Anything else, I'll be be voting no on.
Mayor Proton, would you entertain lowering the threshold?
To five.
Five units?
Yep.
Explain the fee. I'm trying to understand the 3.65 fee. Is that per foot?
Yeah, per foot from 7.36 to 3.68.
So an increase of $2?
No, decrease.
You know, I think we're right now.
Right now, the proposal is $7.36. Right. And I I'm saying we go to 3.6.
Which is a reduction of the recommendation, but an increase of what we're.
A slight recommendation, yes.
Well, it's not, the the current in lieu fee is not not judged by square foot. It's judged by a percentage of construction cost. So it's sort of apples and oranges. Hard to compare those two.
Right, but it averages about, it said $1.57.
Well, I'd just like to make the point. I'm I'm coming at it from completely the opposite angle as my my compadre over there.
Our friend.
Friend, my compadre friend, Mayor Proton, James. And I I would like to see the us give it a shot at 15% and 16$ in lieu fees because I heard our consultant say that the market could bear that. I actually think that the mayor mayor Ward's point that we don't have a ton of. I heard our consultant say that the market could bear that. I actually think that the mayor mayor ward's point that we don't have a ton of development actually may 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 mean that it it could work actually because we, you know, there's not, there's not so many developments. There's there's prized locations and and that might make developers more eager to develop those properties and willing to bear these costs. But I don't think that's going to happen, but by the by the other comments that we have here on council. And but I I would not, I would not be going for lowering what we have as our as our recommendations. I I'm tempted to ask what what the in Lufi would be if we included another four percent of low income, but you know, I I don't know if there's if there's not support for that, if it's worth worthwhile. So I'm saying four percent very low, four percent low, or a total of eight percent. And then what our in Lufi would be there, I guess it'd be a little higher than than seven thirty six. And that that that's just really where I am, but you know, I don't know if there's a way, Mayor Ward, to find out. If there's no interest in that, then let's not go down that road.
Well, let's ask Ms. Savage as her hand up, but I'd like to hear the your staff comment what that would look like. So we have something to talk about.
Our community development director Cecilia Guardo Bailey wants to speak.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, members of the council, Cecilia Guardo, daily community development director. I just wanted to make one point of clarification so that it's clear for the record. Four percent is what already exists right now in our housing element. So our current housing element has a program for inclusionary housing at four percent. That's existing, and that's actually what we have been utilizing. We haven't been utilizing the fifteen percent in the code. We have been utilizing the four percent. The difference is how we calculate what that in Lufi is. So I just wanted to make that clarification that the four percent isn't new. It is existing. What is different is the fee that gets charged. Thank you.
Right. And I think we heard from the developers that they wanted something that was reliable, that they could base what their costs would be on. So in going to square footage and a standard fee of the existing four percent, then everyone knew what it was going to be and you could you could, you know, you weren't going to be surprised whether we're going through the zoning code or or in Lufi. So I thank you for saying that. So our existing is four percent. So we would be lowering it if we if we modified it, but.
And just to make the point again, what I'm thinking of Mayor Ward here is our young folks who are just starting out, who we need to get in town and able to to live here as they're starting their families and all of our folks that work in our service industries. We don't want them to have to come in from inland empire. We want them to be able to live right here in our community and add to the fabric. Our community, we just don't have that housing. And I would like to believe that market rates would provide it, but I think the evidence is in that they they have not thus far. And our our program, as it currently stands, certainly isn't onerous and hasn't really produced any affordable housing. So I think something needs to be done. If if our consultants or or maybe Ms. Savage can could quickly quantify, I I just for my own application, perhaps what the what that in Lufi would be if we had a four percent very low as we have now and added on a four percent low.
Yes, thank you. Our consultants are very quick, and if we had that combination, the fee would be eight dollars and sixty six cents per square foot.
And by the way, they they volunteered to do that calculation and said they could do it very quickly. So I'm not, I don't think I'm out of line asking for that twice now. Okay.
If I could, Madam Mayor, my my thinking on this is that I think you hit it on the head when you when you talked about in San Clemente, we don't have a lot of space. We're not going to have any hundred unit projects being built. They're all going to be infill projects, four, six, maybe as many as maybe, maybe more, but highly unlikely. I I think the solution to this is, as Jean said, the free enterprise system. You know, we we now allow ADUs in this town, which are going to provide the potential for many low income housing. Staff mentioned that the the two million dollars could be distributed, the nonprofits request a hundred thousand dollars per unit. Someone may say, I don't need a hundred thousand dollars to build my unit, but I then would provide low housing. I could do it for fifty thousand. And if they got fifty thousand, we wouldn't have twenty units. We have forty. And if someone said I can afford twenty five thousand dollars, we wouldn't have forty units within eighty units. So I think the solution is to move forward with existing laws. The ADUs are there. And I think they're coming and they will provide low cost housing for people that want to live in this town and and afford it without living in a two thousand, four thousand square foot ocean view house. But have a place where they can enjoy this beautiful community. So I I I like Jean's, I can support the two percent reduction. I can't support any any increase in fees. I think our fees are substantial, but not substantial. They're there. They're generating money. They'll continue to generate money. I can, I can support a two percent reduction with the existing fee in place.
I accept your amendment.
Oh, then then if it's appropriate, I would make a motion that we adopt staff recommendation to determine the project that's categorically exempt as as recited in item one with the acceptance of the ordinances, the resolution with no increase in fees.
Second.
Excuse me, but you do need to read the resolution and ordinance titles.
Do I need to read? Okay, then I I make a motion that we determine that project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA and or not subject to further environmental review pursuant to section fifteen oh sixty C, fifteen oh sixty one B three and fifteen three seventy eight. It is not possible to predict which properties in the city. Do I need to read that entire section?
Yes, you do.
Okay, it's not possible.
You're going to earn it.
To predict which properties in the city, if any, may be proposed to be developed with a project that is subject to the IHP, whether any development or density will result from the proposed changes, whether any development or density will result that would not already have occurred under the existing IHP or zoning ordinance, whether any project may elect to submit inclusionary housing in in Lufi's in lieu of constructing affordable housing units onsite or any possible significant environmental impacts, particular to the adoption of the IHP update, including and associated in Lufi calculation modification and zoning ordinance updates. Therefore, this action, one, will not result in any direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment SEQA guidelines, section fifteen oh six sixty C. Two, cannot be seen with certainty based on review of the facts to have no possible significant impact on the environment, including impacts on water or traffic, SEQA guidelines, section fifteen oh sixty one B three. And three, to not constitute a project under SEQA California guidelines, SEQA guidelines, section fifteen three seventy eight. Any development subject to the IHP will be subject to environmental review under SEQA. My second part of my motion is without any fee increases to introduce ordinance seventeen twelve entitled in ordinance of the city council, the city of San Clemente, California, adopting updates to the city's inclusionary housing program and amendments to the city's zoning ordinance, section seventeen point twenty four point one twenty inclusionary housing. And the third part, again, without any increase in fees, the adoption of resolution twenty one dash oh nine entitled resolution of the city council, the city of San Clemente, California, amending the city's development processing fee schedule.
Second.
Okay, so we have a. Mayor Board, if I may, I mentioned that earlier when I asked Ms. Savage a question. Can we apply the IHP to existing development in addition to the new development to allow for both so we can hopefully, you know, allow for another opportunity to add those units?
So let's clarify.
Restricted now.
Are you asking for anyone that has an existing development that's already entitled? That we would go in and apply the fees to that development?
If they add residential. No, no, it would be just as that development portion only that's added. It just will give us another opportunity to be able to, you know, capture those affordable units or in Lufi's.
You want to include that in the motion?
I was hoping if you're all amiable to that.
Well, comfortable with that inclusion?
I I need it clarified because I'm not understanding what what it is by existing development.
Inclusionary housing development at this the inclusionary housing program at this time, as it's written, applies only to new development. So my example earlier was that, say, there's an existing development, right? And then the owner wants to add more than six units, maybe is adding ten. Well, that's going to apply, right? Will allow that that to be able to be applied so we can capture some more affordable units or in Lufi's if they choose to expand because right now IHP only applies to new development.
So let me ask staff, if someone's tearing down a one single family home and they're in a high density area, isn't that new construction when they're going to do six units?
It would be. And in the example that Councilmember Ferguson explained where maybe someone's keeping a a ten unit apartment and they want to add ten units. As it's written now, it's not explicit that those additional ten units are new development and the additional language just would make that explicit. So there is no question.
I see. So additional units that you would like to add to something, we could put that into our inclusionary housing program as possible affordable housing.
Be very beneficial. Thank you.
Do you, did that make sense, Councilmember Noblock?
I'm embarrassed to say it did not.
I know it's. It's, I'm having trouble following it.
Is the idea, Laura, that what, that you have an existing project, they're expanding the project, the?
It would trigger the in Lufi or the?
Based on the entire project or just based on the new?
Just the new development that's added.
It is a new development. So I have no problem with that.
It's added on to existing, but as it's written now, it's only new development from scratch, from the ground up.
It seems to me, staff, maybe how, I guess the question is, how would you interpret it? It's a new project. It's a new development. You're adding on to a new. I I think it would be included, but I have no problem with it being included in language and motion.
So Steph, could you help us with some language to add to the current motion?
I understand your concern. Cecilia, would you agree from an interpretation standpoint that that additional development will be constituted as new development on existing development property?
Yes, I would, but I think that we could probably add some language to make that clearer. And Jennifer, do you have some wording that we could utilize for this?
Yes, and I will guide you to a page within your packet. So we'll need to change the language in two places. One is the program itself. And then the second is the actual zoning code. If you go to page seven A dash five four, it's the draft zoning code. Letter B is applicability. And it applies to residential projects identified in the inclusionary housing program. And if you, and C one, it says the number and types of units.
Excuse me for interrupting, Jennifer. I didn't hear the page number, seven A three oh.
Seven A dash five four. And item B refers to the inclusionary housing program. And so if you continue to seven A dash five seven, the start of the program, and bear with me while I'm doing this on the fly. On the second page of that seven A dash five eight, there is a bold underline, who participates?
I'm sorry, I just got to seven A five four.
Yeah, I will, I will pause for just a moment. So now I'm on seven A dash five eight.
Jennifer, was there a change we're recommending on dash five four?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. I it that doing that on the fly referenced the inclusionary housing program in the housing element.
So Jennifer, where is it on page fifty eight where it mentions who participates?
So the change would be after who participates, where it says the program shall apply to new developments of six or more dwelling units, comma, or existing developments adding six or more units, comma.
So that seems to be in line with what Councilmember Ferguson was mentioning, that it, okay. That it only applied to new development.
Does that satisfy your concerns, Lauren?
It does. Thank you. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second, and you will allow that amendment to the zoning of who, that it applies to existing development or any new development of existing. Is there any other substitute motion?
I have a substitute motion, and I'll ask for your guidance, Mayor Ward. I my substitute motion would be the same one that the SEQA exemption. And then following the staff recommendation for maintaining the four percent for very low income and then going with the seven sixty three for the in Lufi. So I would read that.
You know, I think you just said it. I think you're keeping in keeping for the four percent, which would and doing the seven sixty three per square foot.
Seven thirty six.
Seven thirty six, we're all. And then adopting the resolution, modifying the fees. So I I will second your motion. And the the reason I'm doing that is because I think for the housing element, we should base the fee on actually some mathematical reason why we're charging it. So I appreciate that you are pulling away from the fifteen percent and going with what it actually costs to build it a unit from a market rate. So I will second that motion.
Thank you. And it goes to a point you made before, too, which is while our Reno obligations are different than these obligations, we do want to show that we are, we are taking a sort of formulaic technical approach to trying to plan for these units. I think having that, that our experts report that shows how they got to that figure will show that a conscious effort to do that. And I think it's will support us if, well, when we don't hit our arena numbers.
Okay, and so and you will add Councilmember Ferguson's concern also as the same motion before that it applied to existing development and they're adding units. Okay, so I believe for for a proper order here, we're going to take the substitute motion first. So there's a motion by Councilmember Duncan and a second by Mayor Ward.
Point of order.
Yes.
At the first motion, the city attorney under the city court required the entire motion for it to develop.
We can clarify that with the city clerk. That was all read before in the prior motion.
What do you think?
Yeah, I I think that he can reiterate the full motion with the two minor amendments to it. They're good. Thanks. I have the same question. Thank you.
Okay, so.
You're fine with the, you just said amen plus a couple of changes.
You did. You agreed with that. The motion was read and you made the changes that you applied.
Okay, the yeah, the motion that was read, the changes would be keeping the four percent, going with the seven thirty six.
Per square foot.
Per square foot in Lufi and applying the inclusion housing policy to additions of more than six units, as we discussed.
In existing development.
In existing development.
Right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on that. Madam clerk, will you please take the roll call vote?
Yes, Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
No.
Councilmember Noblock.
No.
Mayor Proton James.
No.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
That fails.
Okay, that motion fails. So the original motion.
And I just want to make a clarification on the original motion. Was it your intention that it be two percent reduction? I didn't hear that in the motion, but I heard it just before.
Yes, it was a two percent reduction as recommended by Mr. James with the fees remaining the same.
Okay.
Okay, so I heard no increase in fees when you made the motion. So you need to clarify.
That was.
All right.
Okay. So the original motion, Councilmember Duncan.
No.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock.
Aye.
Mayor Proton James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
And I'm a no.
Curious, three to two.
Okay. Thank you, Gabriel. You didn't get to talk at all. Should have asked you a question. Thank you.
He looks great in his suit.
He does. And Julie and Darren, thank you very much, and Cecilia. Thank you.
Next item is item eight. Report from the Public Works Director City Engineer concerning the approach for December twenty twenty one San Clemente trolley service.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, the Atmosbuddy Deputy Public Works Director. The city council expressed an interest in the last council meeting, starting the trolley service the week of, the weekend of May fourteen and continuing through the weekend of May twenty first. So staff researched this and coming back. So staff researched this and coming back with the, with the results of the research. The staff would, is prepared to start the, the trolley service on May fourteenth if desired by City Council. There are a couple of considerations that I'd like to present. One is cost. So the cost to provide the additional service that's requested by the City Council is eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. And this eighteen thousand five hundred dollar would not be covered under the current OCTA grant. However, we talked to OCTA and they would be willing to consider a minor scope change. So this is not guaranteed, but they will be, they will be open to considering that option. But even if OCTA does not approve that cost change to provide us with the eighteen thousand five hundred, the current budget would cover that, that eighteen thousand five hundred dollars, so, in, in the existing budget. The second, the second consideration we'd like to present is that if we start early, the blue line that takes us and connects us to Dana Point, when, they will not, Dana Point isn't starting early like we are. So it is not an issue and the OCTA would be okay with it, but we just wanted to relate to you that for those, there wouldn't be a connection with Dana Point. The other issue that we wanted to present is if we start early, and when we start, we will incorporate all the COVID protection and protocols that are imposed by the state or by the federal government would be implemented as far as cleaning, wearing masks, separation, and all of that. Finally, the City Council requested that we look into the possibility of purchasing two additional trolleys. So the cost of each of the trolleys is two hundred and ten thousand dollars, and the current lead time for these trolleys is about six months. So even if we order them today, they would not be available for us for this year, but they will be available for next year. But in addition to the cost of purchasing those two additional trolleys, there's an operational cost of these trolleys, which is about two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And if we, the City Council desires to, that we move forward with this, then staff would be budgeting for a portion of that operational cost, which is about twenty-five percent of the two hundred and fourteen thousand, which is about fifty-four thousand, and that will be incorporated in the operational cost for this upcoming budget year. And then the remaining will, will be for the following fiscal year. So at this time, staff, staff seeking direction as to whether or not to proceed with the additional weekends. And if staff desires the purchase of the additional trolleys, when we have the clear, you know, direction as to how to spend the federal funding that we will get, I believe we'll be coming back to you with more direction and specific allocation of these funds. And I'll be here to take any further questions.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Um, what's, I don't know this, what's the final stop? What's, what's the location of the final stop leading up to Dana Point?
I think it's off of Clemente. There's a, there's a map included in your package, so, Mayor Protem. And it is, so, I'm gonna wear my glasses for this. I believe it's off of Clemente by the shopping center.
Sprouts Center, Mayor Protem, Sprouts.
Camino Meracosta and Camino de Estrella.
Okay, and then my, my other question is the age of our fleet of, of bus, it doesn't sound like we should get a, get, get one if it's going to take six months to get it. But maybe if the age of our fleet is, it's, if it's time, is, is it time to replace one or two of them?
Not yet, I believe in the next couple of years. Their time life is around six years. And I think we have a couple of more years for, before we have to replace any of them.
There's not a, is there a mileage limit or?
I'm not sure it's a mileage, I believe it's, it's based on, I, I will thought this around six years, every six years you need to replace them by age.
So Mayor Protem, six years with also, there's three factors in replacement. The lifespan, condition, and mileage. So in theory, we get to six years and there's only ten miles on that.
Right.
We would, we wouldn't replace it, but if we get to five years and we're exceeding two hundred thousand miles in cost for maintenance, that would be something that would trigger us to look at a replacement early with those three factors.
Okay, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ferguson.
Thanks, Mayor Ward. Um, I have just a couple of quick questions, a comment. Um, tonight we're addressing the additional service schedule for two more weekends. It says eighteen thousand five hundred. Bringing back into the budget for the budget, you know, that's coming up. Are you bringing back the two trolleys in the budget cycle in which we'll be addressing? Or wanting us to decide tonight?
No, Councilmember Ferguson, I'll address that question specifically. So as I've communicated to the council, once the treasurer releases the guidelines to the eight million dollars, we finance will be bringing back a spending plan. I think what Public Works is looking for tonight is a continued acknowledgement that we would like to see two trolleys if applicable.
Okay, but we're not, we're not approving that.
No.
Okay, perfect, that's good, all right, because that's not what's being asked here. So I want to make sure we're sticking to the report. And then also, Mr. Sun, the council did decide that we wanted to return to seeing budget strings in the fiscal impact of anything we approved. So if we could remember to maybe advise staff to include a budget string so we know where the funds are coming from, that would be good.
We, so Councilmember Ferguson, I'm really glad you brought that up. We are looking at that, there are some challenges in providing accurate data because, for instance, a CIP project, you budget three and a half million dollars for substitution. Right now, let's just say I've only spent hypothetically five hundred thousand dollars. So in essence, there's a balance of three million dollars still. However, that's committed to a contract, there's staff cost to charge it, and so.
Oh, yes, excuse me, we weren't looking to do the balance. It was Councilmember Noblock, this would be pretty tough to decide what the balance would be, but just the string, just the budget string.
That's, that's not a problem.
Not the balance. Okay, I wanted to, pardon me for interrupting, I just wanted to catch you before you, you had to explain too much on that one. But that'd be appreciated, appreciated, thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Okay, so Councilmember James, one comment that I would make is that I think we have enough time since once we hear what the federal funds could be used for, that they could bring the trolley system back to us. And I think we should look at it more as a separate report then because there are requirements from OCTA on usage. And whenever we start to look at adding trolleys, we have to consider how many, we have to look at how many riders we have to make sure we're within the grant.
Understood.
Okay, so I think that would be better to look at, at that time. I do have some concern of, you know, the request for the early trolley service, I believe was only from one person. I'm not sure that the downtown business has asked for it, have they weighed in at all? I, I think just one person brought it up and then we decided to talk about it. But I am concerned that it's, it's about nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a weekend to add these two trolleys. And that's going to come out of our general fund if, if OCTA doesn't approve this minor alteration. So I'm, I'm not sure if we're, are we getting any bang for the buck for two weekends? That's what I'm not sure of, you know, adding this.
My understanding from talking to the Downtown Business Association is they would like to see it. They weren't looking at the money specifically. You know, they, they felt like it would show cities' commitment to getting the businesses going as we lead into summer, which is, I think, one of the reasons that Mayor Protem James asked for it originally. So I, I agree with you, Ma- Mayor Ward, that it is a lot of money. And I'm willing to wait, I guess, to fully vote on it if we, if we have more time, but I, I would, I would generally support it.
So, so Mayor Ward, I do have a question there. So it costs nine thousand dollars a weekend, does every other weekend during the season of service, is that basically nine thousand dollars?
I'm going to defer to the, to answer that.
Yeah, that's the average cost for, for the three days for a weekend, yes, that is.
All right, that's a good question.
I'm in favor of, of the early starting. I think with COVID, we've been locked up. I think the community would, would welcome this with open arms. I think the downtown businesses would benefit from it. I think it'd be a wonderful amenity for our citizens, and I'm fully in support of, of starting early and opening.
All right, so is that a motion?
It sounded like.
You gotta read it.
No, no.
Let's read it so that the, the public knows what we're.
Here you go, I'll read, I'll read it. Save you. Provide directions, oh, it's, there's a staff, provide directions to staff on whether or not to add two additional weekends for the San Clemente Trolley to include Friday, May fourteenth through Sunday, May sixteenth, and Friday, May twenty-one through Sunday, May twenty-third. And those two weekends are my motion.
Okay, motion by Mayor Protem James and a second by Councilmember Noblock.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock.
Aye.
Mayor Protem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Curious.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That was a great question, Mayor Protem.
The next item is warrant register and payroll register.
Council, do we have a motion or?
So moved.
Okay, may I make a comment?
Yes.
To separate out the two warrant registers to vote on, if we may, I'm just.
Okay, so Mayor Protem, will you modify that?
So moved to approve the wire transfers number twenty-four seventeen through twenty-four nineteen and warrants number five seven two six eight five through five seven two eight seven zero, paid on four two twenty-one in the amount of two million eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents.
Is, Councilmember Ferguson, was it the warrant register you wanted to separate or the payroll?
The two different warrant registers.
Okay, so is there a second for that? Okay, second by Councilmember Noblock on the first warrant register. Thank you.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember.
Aye.
Mayor Protem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Curious five oh.
Okay.
So my motion is to approve wire transfers number two four two zero through two four two five and warrant numbers five seven two eight seven one through five seven two nine nine five, paid on four nine twenty, twenty-one in the amount of two million five hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars and twelve cents.
Okay, send motion and a second. Councilmember Ferguson, would you like to make a comment or you're just going to separate your vote?
Oh, thank you, yes, I'm, I'm not supporting voting for those, that wire transfer because it includes some multiple consultants that I did not approve when they came forward to council without contracts, so I'll be voting no on that. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second by Councilmember Noblock.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
No.
Councilmember Noblock.
Yes.
Mayor Protem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Curious four one.
Thank you, and is there a, a motion for the payroll register?
Approved, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock.
Aye.
Mayor Protem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye. All right, so the next item is nine B and that was continued?
That's correct, that was continued to the next council meeting.
Okay.
Next item, possible changes to the structure and composition of city commissions and committees. Oh, we do have one speaker card, and that's from John Brown.
Okay, um, hold on one second. So this is a public comment for item C.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, my microphone, Mayor Ward?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I've emailed all you members of staff and city council my views on the subject. I just want to make sure that it's available for the public, public record on the composition of the planning commission. The current PC was organized this way in the, in the mid-two thousand fives in, in a major reorganization of city staffs and commissions, in which time we canceled the Transportation Commission, the Cultural Heritage Committee, and the Design Review Committee, and merged them into the Planning Commission. So you took the requirements for twenty slots or twenty members of various committees and merged them down to one planning commission. You increased the planning mission from five to seven. So you could, it allowed you to use a, a, a design review subcommittee as a subset of it, and you could meet with three members, so you wouldn't have a Brown Act violation. It's been a very effective and a very efficient, in my view, system on the eleven years I've been on the planning commission. And the, the value of the design review subcommittee is, is apparent all over town as you see the quality of the projects that have been brought to, to pass in this city as we've upped our ante in far as design quality. And that's where the work should be done. That's where you want to move the load-bearing walls or lower the ceilings of the garage so that when it comes to planning commission, the planning commission can focus on land use and the other findings required. And so the trench work and the tough work should be done at design review. Design on the desire, particularly at the planning commission and particularly the city council level can be very dangerous and can result in litigation, and, and we have a track worker to that. So I encourage you to maintain the current structure of seven for the planning commission is the most optimum structure and efficient for, for the city and it's, it's the various planning things we need to do. The other thing, I, I, it came out of the council discussion on the agendizing this is the fact that was mentioned that community development now supports five committees or commissions. The planning commission, design review, but additionally, human resources, homeless, and the safety committee. And I was astounded at that. Originally Denise Cabrero was brought over to planning for the initial, initial efforts for SB two back in the days from HR, and HR used to run their own committees and commissions. Community development should focus on planning and community development and the functions required of it. I was astounded to hear that community development has become the sum total of the committees and commission. Those administrative duties for human resources and homeless should be moved back to HR. A, and for the sa- safety committee, move it up to the city, the city manager's office. Thank you, my three minutes are up. So I think you should refocus on that, I've been told my three minutes are up.
So Don, before you leave, Don, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Great. So tonight, we are not making any changes, I believe, to the committee. That's coming up in a future council meeting. So I think we appreciate your comments very much and we'll, we'll take those in as we're doing this. But tonight was just, I believe we had to do an ordinance. And Madam Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, we had to do this ordinance because the changes to our committees were going to happen. And we had to do this tonight to stop that because we are, we're delaying changing our committees.
That's my recommendation, that you repeal the previously adopted ordinance that were slated to go into effect July first. The, the main problem, i- if you don't do that, is that you had extended the terms of the existing commission committee members with the exception of the planning commission. There's seven member boards, but if these ordinances go into effect, then the city code says they're five members. So, to allow you the latitude, some time to possibly make changes. My recommendation is just repeal it and I'll, I'll come back to you when I know what you want to do with nice clean ordinances for you to adopt.
Right, so Don, did you understand that tonight? We're just repealing the ordinance, but we are not making any changes to the committee. And I think the planning commission is coming back to us by June, I believe, we're going to.
You have to do it by June because you didn't extend them. So you have to make the decision on that, and how many you're going to appoint here very quickly, that's why I was here tonight. You're planning on holding interviews on the eighth of June to put a planning commission in place by one July, and the question then is five or seven members?
But I believe that's coming back to us. I don't have that in the staff.
It was our intent to come back in May with the, the, the staff's, I guess, recommendation based on council direction and for the council to deliberate on what the planning commission would be. We plan on giving you kind of in separate agenda reports. So the one that we want to bring back first is more of a community development agenda report related to planning commission, human affairs, and the homeless. and the homeless subcommittee that were directed by council. The, the second report, which will come thereafter, would be the discussion of the BPR Commission, the coastal advisory, and the golf commission. So we'll kind of bundle that up separately, because CD administers those, those committees, so they'll bring that one first, so that you can still maintain your timetable for interviews for planning commission.
So Don, the comments that you made regarding how many committees that are under community development are, are good comments, and, and we'll definitely look at that, but you can make these comments again when, or write to us when the planning commission is gonna, those, that staff report will be before us.
I'll tell you tonight, and I'll tell you again when the, the next report comes up, thank you.
I know, I think Mayor Potem wants to make a comment.
Don. Thank you for everything you've done for the last eleven years, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And what are you gonna do with your spare time now?
Talk to us, tell us items, right, Don, oh, he's out.
You said another question?
No.
Okay.
No, it's good, see, on the golf course, Don. All right, so tonight is just again repealing those ordinances because of the timetable. All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
I think.
Councilmember Duncan, would you like to read it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion and read it. Okay, I move that we introduce ordinance number seventeen thirteen entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, Repealing Ordinances Numbers Sixteen Eighty-four, Sixteen Ninety-seven, and Seventeen Ten Relating to the Beaches, Parks, and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, Golf Course Committee, Human Affairs Committee, Coastal Advisory Committee, and/or the Investment Advisory Committee."
Would you like to second that?
Second.
Okay. Second by Mayor Potem.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock.
Aye.
Mayor Potem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Carrie's five oh.
Do we have any communications for, or communications part two?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Please moving on to reports, uh, city manager, Fourth of July celebration update.
So pursuant to council direction, I just wanted to provide the council and the public with an update, so we are on track to have our Fourth of July at the end of the pier for Fourth of July. I can tell you that myself, Samantha Wiley, Public Works, and Chief Manhart are working to have the resources to pull it off, and at this point, we don't see any issues or concerns, so I just wanted to keep the council apprised of that. The other item, I'd like to invite Jonathan Lightfoot on really quick, and just to give a brief update, we've had some restaurants who have asked questions about outdoor dining and what happens after June fifteenth, et cetera, et cetera, and I thought it would be advantageous for Jonathan to not only give the council a very brief update, but also communicate to the public, so Jonathan, if you would.
Thank you, um, so I'd like to start just with rewinding to the last time that we touched based on this topic and policy, and council initially had a ending timeframe of the outdoor dining to be in in the fall of twenty twenty, obviously, our situation with the COVID extended beyond that, so council revisited that policy, and the current resolution in place ties the end of our outdoor dining to the end of our local emergency order. And so we don't have a fixed deadline or ti- ending timeframe to that program, that will be tied to when council in the future decides to end that program. I'd be happy to discuss, you know, my, my thoughts and recommendations on that at a future time when council wants to address that at more length, but that's the, the current framework where we are right now, there's not a, a fixed end timeline to that. In the interim, we also are moving forward a full-time discussion of a permanent parklet program, and that's gonna kick off in July, so I'll be working with a member of the planning division to review some potential code changes to allow for this to become a permanent program. That'll kick off in July with the planning commission and a discussion with our business community, and that will work, be a working program that will eventually go to city council before we hit twenty twenty-two. And just to remind the council, we have a public works CIP project that's already funded, that was supposed to be January of this year, that we pushed back to January of next year. And so my goal is that that permanent program would come into play by that January twenty twenty-two timeframe, so that we still have the outdoor dining opportunity going into next year as well. So that's, that's a high level of where we are in the two pieces that are at play with the outdoor dining, both the current temporary program under our emergency order, as well as our timeline and plans for the permanent program. I'm happy to respond if there are any questions on, on either of those.
Mayor Potem, go ahead.
So you know, one of the things that I think we need to do in an assessment on is usage of those, those spots on, on the street. A lot of people have come to me and, and complained about several locations not using the spots and taking up parking, spark parking areas. I've looked at it myself, I think it's a pretty valid concern, that's my first part, and then the second part is, you know, June fifteenth is this magic date in, in the state. You know, I don't know what, I, I'm still kinda unclear what's going to happen on June fifteen, but it would appear to me at the point in time that the restaurants are at a hundred percent capacity in their dining rooms, that the, the outdoor dining areas almost becomes a public gift from, a gift of public resources to, to, to those restaurants. I say that in one hand, on the other hand, I love the outdoor dining, I think it, I think the outdoor dining has become, has made San Clemente become a bit of a destination, and I think those are all good things, but at some point in time, I think we're going to have to look at some sort of square footage lease to, to those restaurants, and I know they're just coming out of COVID, and, and, and we, we may have to be sympathetic to that, but it, but I think at some point in time, we are going to have to collect. And I'm not saying that time is now, I'm saying it's time to start planning for that, for that time, and it'd probably be worthy of a discussion in May or June for the council to have, to understand how staff is going to, to approach this, and then the other piece of, of the puzzle that is a concern of mine is it, when the state of emergency order ends, where are these restaurants going to stand, stand with alcohol board of control and being on, on the sidewalk and on the streets with, with beer and, and liquor? Are we looking at any of this, Jonathan?
Yes, good question, so to address the first question in regards to fee for outdoor space, that's certainly something that's a component of the permanent program, and, and I've addressed that with multiple restaurants already, and so they are expecting that that will become a component of the, the full-time program. If council were interested in, in initiating that sooner than the implementation of the full-time program, again, thinking January twenty twenty-two being when that full-time program kicks off, then I think that would be good direction to provide staff, if you do want us to, to pursue that, and I could coordinate with, you know, our city attorney, et cetera, to look at what fee may be appropriate and how to best implement that. In regards to the second question, um, you know what, I lost my train, I thought there, Councilman James, can you remind me of your, your second point that you had brought up?
Remember what the hell I said? What I was talking about was usage, and I think some restaurants are, are taking up more space than is needed, and how are we going to measure that and how are we going to deal with those restaurants?
Sure, okay, so on, on the, that topic of, of usage of space, you know, I would have two comments. One, I, I do think that that's important, that if we are allocating space within the public realm, that it's being used regularly, and I have also been hearing of some complaints in, in that nature. My thought on this through the, you know, administration of this program is to produce a memo to all of our current participants indicating a, a standardized expectation of use of time. What I would be recommending is some leniency on Monday, recognizing that the restaurant industry as a whole, often there are restaurants that don't operate on Mondays, but a, a minimum amount of operational time on the other days, and, you know, I think that that would in, in, increase that level. I, I would look for a little bit of time before implementing that, I think that even by May that we can get that into place. My, my rationale for that is that there is a, a challenge right now in the restaurant industry in hiring back staff, some of that goes to the extension of unemployment benefits that exist out there. Our chamber is actively working with some of our neighboring chambers and posting restaurant job openings, so there's a specific website that has been set up that we've coordinated on, but that is a, a real challenge right now for some of our restaurants to increase to, to full-time operations, that they have to bring back full-time staff. And so that is, that is one challenge that they're going through right now, as they all are ramping up, I'm sure you've all seen downtown has become much more lively in the last few weeks with the improved weather and, and longer hours.
So my last, my last comment or question, so we, um, are we requiring to be named as an additional insured? Do we have hold, hold harmless agreements in place, and what's the minimum insurance we're requiring of, for each of our parking slots and our sidewalk?
Sure, yes, we do require liability insurance from all participants within the public space, so if someone is participating on their own pri- own property, they're not required to, but I have been coordinating with our HR and risk analysis team to review those insurance certificates and endorsements as part of the allowance to operate in the public area, so yes, that is required.
Named as an additional insured part of that agreement?
Correct, yes, we are. And I did recall your other question, your other question was in regards to the state and the ABC operations, I have reached out to them in the past, and I'll, I'll do so again. Their intent was to extend the program for a week beyond the state ending their state of emergency. I, I don't anticipate that to be June fifteenth, but I, I, I do think that that's, there's value in approaching them again, given that we are not the only city where a lot of restaurants have now expended significant resources in building out these spaces, so I imagine that this has been a topic, that there may have been a shift since my last discussion with them on.
So do you think once that state emergency order is lifted, there is going to be some mechanism for these restaurants to be able to get ABC approval for being on the sidewalk and on the street?
Sure, good question, not immediately, if the state were to lift that restriction in June, or, or to end their state of emergency, which I don't expect to happen in June, but if they were, then there's not an immediate mechanism right now for ABC. There is some legislation at the state level, there's a senate bill, and forgive me for not remembering the, the number right now, but there is a senate bill that is being considered to really expand the opportunity for outdoor dining inclusive of alcohol, so it would be instructing essentially those state agencies that we're working with, coastal commission, ABC, et cetera, to be more flexible and allowing these types of outdoor dining environments to continue.
Should, Madam Mayor, should we look at giving a letter of support to that senate bill?
We can have staff look that up, I don't know if it's something that has to be done immediately, we should have agendized it earlier.
No, no, I mean, not, I mean, I'm, I'm suggesting we agendize that to get a staff report on, on that.
Bring back a letter of support.
Well, that's definitely workable, we'll look at the hearing date set for that bill and then work with the author, but we'll come back to the council.
I don't think we, we don't need a vote on that, do we?
No, I don't think.
Two giving me directions, so bring it back, yeah.
Yeah, bring it back. So with what you've asked, Mayor Potem, I'm thinking that if staff's looking at January twenty twenty-two, it's to get through the summer season, but I am a little concerned that if the governor was to lift that order in, in the summer, like in July or August, we would be caught with not knowing, no one would know what to do, so I think it's good instruction to have staff look at that and, and get back to us on that issue. I don't know, I don't think you're gonna be able to look at, I don't know if you're gonna be able to look at what our sidewalk or our parking spaces that right-of-way is worth, you know, for cost, but maybe you can, but.
Well, I think it'd be very similar to the farmer's market.
I'm not sure, because that's a recurring, only once a week, so I don't know if they're using the right-of-way every day, I don't know how we figure that, so I guess Jonathan.
Smart.
You're gonna come back to us with some type of method for that, but the ABC part, we really, we want, I think we all want staff to know what that's gonna be, just in case that order gets lifted, you know, unexpectedly.
So my question of the city attorney, uh, city attorney, if we continue it, at, at some point in time after those restaurants are at a hundred percent capacity, is, is, is that a, a gift of public? Public course?
We, we need some criteria to decide who gets that opportunity, Councilmember, and you talked to Mr. Lightfoot about that earlier, but in terms of assuming there's fair criteria and it's, it's being utilized according to that criteria, the, the city has broad authority to underwrite and stimulate business. And, and so you would have, you have quite a bit of latitude to look at doing that, even in the long term.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, before we go on, could I ask the city manager a question during his presentation time?
Yes.
Specifically, Eric, regarding the opening of our meetings next cycle for the benefit of the public, can you describe how it's gonna be next week different than it is tonight?
So, yes, Councilmember Noblock, so the next meeting with public comments will be inside the auditorium, so individuals will be queued up in the fireside chatroom, and when it's time for them to provide public comment, they will be able to come into this room and provide co- public comment, and then leave, and then probably the next meeting after that, we will work on a small occupancy of individuals who can stay in the council chambers for the auditorium to view the council.
You mentioned a small number, this is a very big room, if the council members were on the platform, as you suggested, there could be a lot, when you say a small number.
Well, I should, I mean, I don't know the number, but we'll, based on the, the vacant space there, we have a COVID calculator that the state provides that lets us know what the appropriate occupancy is. I do believe we might have some crowding issues if we were to try to get all of you up there to maintain six-foot social distancing.
We use on this, maybe.
So we can look at some alternatives, but yeah, we'll, we'll bring in an occupancy that works within the social distancing parameters.
So the public next time will be able to come in, see us publicly, and make their comments in person?
They'll be able to come in and provide public comment, but not stay in the council or in the auditorium, they'll come in, give your public comments, and then leave.
I think we need to improve the audio video out, out there.
So, well, we won't have to worry about the audio outdoors anymore, because we won't have that as a queuing area, there'll be, there's a TV in the fireside chatroom, that's fine, and the audio's fine inside there, so that should be sufficient, and we won't have the outdoor.
Do we know what the occupancy is in the fireside chatroom?
No, I don't, offhand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I think that should be provided to the public, how many are gonna be allowed to be in there?
Yes.
For this next week, or the next council meeting.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Just, and Mr. Sun, I did mention that the CDC, like a month ago, said it was three feet now instead of six, that's what we're practicing where I.
That's a great comment, Councilmember Ferguson, that is related to schools in terms of classmates now being able to be three feet socially distanced versus six, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, we're practicing that, though, where I work, so three feet instead of six, so we're, we're taking, going with that. Thank you, yeah, people really want to get back here, and I know other cities have been, been open with people in their chambers for over a month now, so people want to see that.
And just for clarification, I believe Mr. Sun was referring to the next regular meeting on May fourth.
May fourth, public comments in person, the next meeting in May, people will be able to view the council meeting in person.
Yeah, so the Thursday's meeting.
Will there be Zoom access in those two meetings, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Thursday's meeting on the long-term financial plan will just be Zoom, and the following Tuesday, the April twenty-seventh meeting on the AB one, two, three, four training will also just be Zoom.
Just.
Okay.
Covered a lot.
So, Madam Clerk, where are we, is, are we on, out in C?
If Mr. Sun is finished, then we're ready to go to city attorney.
And Mayor and Council, I've got nothing more tonight, thank you.
Okay.
Councilmembers.
Go ahead.
I just have one, a couple of quick items, I wanted to just report that I attended this last Monday with, with Mayor Ward, the district attorney, Todd Spitzer's. victim and survivor ceremony, because this next week is the National Crime Victim Rights Week, April 18th to 24th. And there was a, it was quite an impressive ceremony. And also, by the way, the seating on that was about 12 inches apart.
We were outside though. We were outside.
12 inches. So anyway, it was a great meeting. The other thing I want to mention, Madam Mayor, is the, also this week is, is Earth Day, April 22. And for those folks that are interested, I'd recommend that Prager University has some wonderful videos on, if you go to Prager University and click climate truth, you'll get a lot of information on, on climate related issues. So just want to acknowledge Earth Day coming up in two days.
Thank you. Mayor Potem, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Okay.
Mayor Ward, I have one local issue. Wanted to congratulate our Tritons football team.
Yes.
Uh, for a thrilling and fantastic victory over Mission Viejo on Friday. Just a fantastic game, last second field goal win and always, you know, always a big deal to beat Mission Viejo. So congratulations especially to the seniors, to Principal Chris Carter and Coach Ortiz for a fantastic win.
Yes, that was, that was really thrilling to have it in like that.
One second. What many of us don't know is, is Mr. Duncan's wife is Mrs. San Clemente and runner-up for Califor- Mrs. California. Is that it? Uh, Mrs. California International.
It misses. Is that current?
Yeah, it's happened. She's, yeah, she was runner-up, uh, but did, did great and, uh, you know, I thought she should have won.
Of course you did. That's, congratulations. But also I would share, congratulations to the Tritons league champs. Very happy you brought that up. I had forgotten about that to bring up tonight.
Right, league champs.
Yep. So one, one town, one team.
Yep. I have a good idea. In a quick, are we almost, I miss it now, almost nine. I just want to talk about the youth job fair, coming to the outlets. And that, I don't want to miss anyone in here, but I'm giving it a plug. The Wellness Prevention Center is coordinating this, co-sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and the Community Outreach Alliance. And the San Clemente Outlets has provided the space for the youth job fair. So kids can go and check out part-time jobs and internships. And I'm happy to see that the city is going to have a booth there as well. So wonderful. And everything's yet free of charge. There's no overhead. So due to the economic impacts of COVID, it's, it's, there's no charge this year. And then I just wanted to suggest bringing, oh, before I go on, businesses that are interested or nonprofits can register by May 4th to have a booth there. And tables and chairs will be made available. So really easy. And they just have to go to fatima at www.wpc-oc.org. And then I just wanted to see if I have support to bring back the confidential documents policy 1201-12 for two reasons. I had suggested confidential or privileged minutes for closed session. And then I just learned that from the city clerk, that the advisement requirement the council adopted, which I didn't support, um, and I don't get confidential documents because of the language that's restricted and expanded for more restrictions and I can't comply with that. I just want to comply with the law. But consequently, staff members, the city clerk said, we're not asked to acknowledge receipt of any documents that are confidential. So basically, council has to acknowledge these if they want the confidential documents, but staff doesn't. And that's a problem because that means that, you know, we're the, we're the lawmakers and policy setters, but staff doesn't have to comply with that and they can have confidential documents without acknowledging not to release them. So those are the two edits to that policy I'd like to agendize for the next meeting on May 4th.
Can I ask the city attorney a question based on that? What, what documents are our staff actually, any of our staff actually getting that they would have to sign something?
Well, documents that are classified as confidential may be generated by various members of the staff. HR might generate something, for example. And the policy right now doesn't require that person to, to acknowledge receipt of the confidentiality admission.
When is it ever that a staff member would disclose any, any document within city operations? I, I just, I've never heard that this has ever been an issue where a staff member would leak something as a part of their job. They are, we have confidential employees and those are usually the ones that I think are dealing with this type of, of, of documents. So I'm just, I'm not seeing the need. I'm seeing, you know, an issue brought up, but I don't believe that it's an issue with our staff that would be, have anything to do with any documents confidential. So, city manager.
I agree that to this point, there has not been an issue with confidential staff drafts.
Yeah, I just, I don't see the issue.
Yeah, there wasn't an issue with council either. You made it an issue, but there was never.
Okay. So that's not agendized. You're asking for something to be agendized. Is there a second?
You're talking over me and Mayor Ward, you can't talk over me.
I want that one to be agendized.
Which item?
I think it is the item about the confidentiality. I mean, just as, just my observation is when documents are coming through the city, he goes to the city clerk and she and her staff handle the documents. So you've got people seeing confidential documents without.
But they're confidential employees.
Without the, the acknowledgements that, that we imposed upon council members, but, but not on staff.
Well, I, I don't see the issue, but.
It's an issue for you, Mayor Ward, with me.
No, I, I understand that. But I'm trying to get it clarified because I don't want to go through a council meeting where we're talking about something we don't need to talk about. So, city attorney, are these not confidential? I'm asking a question, Mayor, Councilmember Noblock. So you, Madam Clerk, are you a confidential employee?
I'm a management employee.
Point of order.
Okay.
Point of order. The request has been made. A second council member has approved the request.
It's just going to come back in.
Go through and say, are you confident?
It's just going to be agendized for discussion then because we can't discuss it anymore tonight.
There's a status of confidential employee in the city. I know that the city attorney has fiduciary obligations, but I'm not sure that any other employee has fiduciary.
So you want to clarify it? Could that come back to us in a white paper before agendizing it?
If council member in this council has concerns, it needs to be addressed.
Okay. So you're agendizing it to come back as staff, the staff issue. You're agendizing it to come back to clarify the staff issue with a gen, with confidential documents.
Yes. And I think the other item that she mentioned was the minutes in the closed session. And I was, I think that's important.
Okay. Scott, can you give us, I, I just need a procedure question. So we had this quite extensively in two different council meetings and one that we ruled on and we just, we just blessed this policy. What is the, is there any rules on when that could be brought back by another council member? That was not, that didn't vote for that policy?
I don't, while I'm looking that up, I, maybe Joanne can help me remember where the minutes. Other, that was not adopted. So I think you can take that up on a motion of two council members anytime. The policy you'd be looking at top to bottom. So that, that's also in order. So those can be brought up again as, as new legislative initiatives.
Okay. So even if a council member was in the minority and did not vote for it, they can agendize it again and again.
Point of clarification, Scott, I, I believe the council took a vote on the closed session minutes.
We did.
If you give me a sec, I can look up.
Okay.
On reconsideration.
Today? No, we didn't. We didn't. You mean today?
Not today.
Oh, previously, yeah, two other times. In fact, I brought. Yeah. I brought it up twice before. Two different years.
Yeah. So the two-member bringback is qualified by section 4.5.6 that says a proposal to reconsider any item. Any action taken by the city council may be raised only at the same meeting or the next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council after the action is taken. It may be raised only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side. Additionally, the motion to reconsider may only be made by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side. So if the minutes was considered as a standalone, I think bringing that back for reconsideration would have to be done pursuant to this policy. But sitting here, I don't remember the order or aggregation of, of these ideas. I apologize for that.
So could you verify that and then bring that back? Would that be okay, Councilmember Ferguson, bring it back at the next meeting for us to consider? Because I, I do know, we have to be very careful that if someone was not in the majority, they didn't vote for it, they, they cannot make that motion.
Yeah, I'd be happy to research that with, with Joanne's help. I, I noted the, the three ideas and can figure out if they're still in play or not pursuant to that policy.
Right. Councilmember Noblock could.
As long as we get that verified.
I think that the motion was three, two council members, Ferguson and Noblock opposing.
Okay.
But I, I'm happy to double check, but I just seem to.
So bring it back at the, the next meeting for us to consider agendizing it for the meeting after that, which would be May.
May 4th. City clerk, opposing what? Minutes?
On the minutes.
No, yeah, we supported having minutes. Councilmember Noblock and I were, yes.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
Yeah. The two of you supported because it passed or failed two to three.
Yeah.
So, right. So we will need to have that verified and we can't, I don't think we can discuss it anymore tonight to, to talk about it because we're getting, we're stepping into having too much discussion.
That's fine. That's city attorney, whomever, look into it and then I, we can propose it again.
Chance.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
So, Madam Clerk, I need to ask you, we are going to be going again into closed session. So do we need a motion on that or can we just go back into closed sessions?
Good idea. They have a motion.
Okay. So, okay. So there's a motion by Mayor Potem James and a second by Councilmember Noblock.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock?
Aye.
Mayor Potem James?
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye. And can we take like a five-minute break?
Well, Mayor, can we, can we just say now, your policy suggests at this point that we tell the public whether we anticipate they should wait for action taken? And that's, that's up to you as a council, but I'm thinking that, that what remains is discussion and not action on the agenda tonight.
I'm not expecting any action. Right. I, no, no reportable action tonight.
We'll, we'll make it official anyway, but so people don't hang on how we've announced it.
Okay. But five-minute break.
Yes, so I would ask that you adjourn to an adjourned regular meeting to be held on April 22nd at 4:00 PM for the purpose of considering the long-term financial plan. That meeting will be held via teleconference. A subsequent adjourned regular meeting will take place on April 27th at 6:00 PM for the purpose of receiving AB 1234 training. That meeting will also be held teleconference and the next regular meeting will take place on May 4th.
So move.
Thank you. A motion by Mayor Pro Tem James and a second by Councilmember Nobloch.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nobloch?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem James?
Aye.
Mayor Ward?
Aye.
And Councilmember Ferguson is absent.